All right, we're ready to begin.
Great. It's Thursday, October 12th, and I'm going to call this Lacey City Council Work Session to Order. We do have one council member, Councilmember Kunkel, who's with us remotely. Everyone else is here in chambers. I also want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Messing Creek, including the Skali Indian Tribe and the Squaxin Indian Tribe. And we have full land acknowledgement on our agenda. Can, with that, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All here with questions, somebody by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries. We've approved tonight's agenda. And first up on our agenda is the Thurston EDC Center Business Innovation Annual Update.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. I'm Heidi McCutcheon. I'm the Director of Operations for the EDC. And I'll let Michelle and Sean introduce themselves as well.
Michelle Pope, I'm Director of the Lacey Maker Space.
Hi, and I'm Sean. I'm the Director of the Center for Business and Innovation.
So to start off with, we know, well, we first want to thank you for your service to our community. I think everybody goes into politics with an idea of what it might be, and oftentimes you're faced with hard decisions and you make your best decision possible and get beat up on some of those decisions. So I'm going to have Michelle pass these down to you guys. We have several businesses who have benefited from the city of Lacey in the past year. So I'm just going to take a moment and hit on some of these highlights so it can be in the record. The Wind family, who owns Iconic Wings, says that they are forever grateful. They appreciate everyone for believing in their concept and helping their dream of owning a business come true. They say thank you for blessing their family, and they look forward to continue to be able to serve the community for years to come. I'm Shar Yates, I'm the Director of Critical Care Kitten Coalition. And she says, "Thank you for supporting not only small businesses, but also the nonprofits whose scope may hold a different interest than regularly desired, but diversity is the key to being well-rounded and supporting all regardless of their scope. Scope of work is detrimental. I applaud you for making this class available to all." Another, Haralyn Smith, she is the owner of AMB General Contracting. She says, "Thank you, Lacey City Council, for your kind generosity. It really means a lot to me." Daniel Rohas, he's VBNC Physical Therapy. "Dear Lacey Council, on behalf of VBNC Physical Therapy staff and all the patients from the community that receive our services, I would like to express our great gratitude for the opportunity you've given us to hand through us to all the community by investing in our business with such a great gift. This has provided the opportunity to uplift the physical therapy services received in our community and incorporating staff to our business capable of offering a much deserved high standard of care." And then lastly, Andy Clark, owner of Andy Clark Jewelry, says, "Thank you, City of Lacey and Lacey City Council for your ongoing support of small businesses, small and local businesses like mine. It truly does make a difference." Just wanted to share with you that your hard work has not gone unnoticed, and people are very thankful for your leadership in our community. With that, I'll hand it over to Sean.
I love that. That is, that is awesome. Thank you. Thanks for sharing.
My pleasure.
And then several of those folks, three of them to be exact, that are on this card, went through the startup training that was sponsored by the city of Lacey. And through that startup training, they were able to create really strong business plans for their business. And that led to them winning the Target Zone Grants last year, which were very large grants that really made a difference in their business startup. So yeah, that was awesome. I apologize in advance. I've been talking about this week, so my voice is already starting to go. But I'm just going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we have going on at the Thurston EDC and some of the programs that the city of Lacey has sponsored this year and some of the results of that. And then we'll move on to the maker space. And so this is our sort of ecosystem here. It's a little hard to see it over there. And so essentially, these are all our 18 resources that we have at the EDC that support businesses, most at no cost or scholarship by generosity from cities. And we have everything from no-cost business advising to advising for government contract work to working with startups and training and growth-stage businesses and training. And so we have a lot of different resources that have supported a lot of the starts in the, in the community today. One of the programs that the city of Lacey has sponsored this year is called Business Enterprise Startup Training. And so essentially, what this class is, is it's a webinar instructor-led class that comes with access to four online courses on writing a business plan, accounting for startups, branding and marketing for startups, and then also structuring and licensing for startups. And so this is really a great first step to get folks off onto the right path when they're starting their business. And so Lacey has provided scholarships for this program this year. And we have some new business starts coming out of Lacey to have attended these courses. The other program that you folks sponsored this year is called Business Tune-Up. This is actually a new program at the Center for Business and Innovation. It's a workshop-style training, and so we actually have people come down to the, our location at the SPSC C Lacey campus down the street there. They bring their laptops, they bring their QuickBooks online, they sit there with the trainer for two days for three hours, and he goes through sending up their QuickBooks charts of accounts, how to add third-party applications, which applications that would be good for their sort of business, and then also learning how to run and generate financial statements for their business. And so this has been a real great help for businesses, especially in that early growth stage where there's, you know, accounting typically gets put on the back burner when it's really the most important thing to be focusing on. This course also comes with online learning modules that they can access and, and, and look at after to, to go back and make sure that they're doing everything correctly. So we do have two upcoming trainings here, sponsored by the city of Lacey in November to celebrate Entrepreneur Month in November. And so we do have a new Business Enterprise Startup Course, and that's starting November 16th and 17th. And then we have a new Business Tune-Up for Accounting on the 14th and 15th. So far this year, in 2023, we have had 51 residents of city of Lacey or businesses that we've worked with in training and coaching. And we've had four new business starts that came out of those interactions. And so that's the work that we're really proud of and the work that, you know, is good for everybody and, and, and a good result of, you know, decisions made in terms of funding. This is our air traffic control website, and so this is where everyone can learn about all the resources that we have. And we support Lacey businesses with all of our resources, no matter what stage of business they're in, just starting growth. We work with a lot of, you know, businesses that have been in business for five, 10 years, helping them to, to go through the scale-up program and stuff like that. And we do have a calendar of events here, and so we'll have all of the events upcoming, including those two Lacey-sponsored events. And so that's something that you can show your, anybody that you know that's in business and could use a little help or is interested in starting a business. Any questions about any of that?
And for businesses that stood up this year, how many of them have a physical, like, commercial location, do you know?
Uh, one, so far, yeah. Uh, one's looking, yeah. And we advocate for lean business startup for a lot of these folks. And so we don't necessarily want them to jump into a location right away. We want them to do, you know, alternative kinds of things, try to sell online, do pop-ups, farmers' markets, that kind of stuff, build the brand. And so, yeah, we want to-
Police is expensive. You're just starting a business. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, but we did not want to jump into a, a, a physical location, which was awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to turn it over to Michelle here in a minute. And we, this is, you know, my, my most exciting project that I've been working on the last couple of years. It's the funnest, you know, of all the stuff that I do. And you just want to thank you for supporting the Lacey Maker Space. It has your city name on it, so that's awesome. One thing that I really want to have taken away from tonight is that I used to think that this was going to be the best maker space in the region. And then I started thinking, this is going to be the best maker space in Washington. And then I thought, maybe this might be the best maker space in the Pacific Northwest. And now I'm starting to think this could be one of the best maker spaces in the entire nation that's open to the public. And so this is an awesome project upcoming. And so Michelle's going to talk a little bit about the construction, and we'll talk about, uh, plans moving forward after this.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks, everybody, for the time and the great introduction. And thank you for all you do to support us, everything you do. Yeah, so, and I want to also really want to, again, thank all of the city council for your support to get us to where we are. And it's, it is regularly felt and appreciated by so many people, which I'll talk about in a minute. But of course, especially Rick, I know you've been such a champion from the very beginning. And as I move into things, please feel free to interject on any of this because you know it very well, I think, as well, what's been, what we've been working on. But I'm looking forward to sharing some of our most recent developments. First, I'm going to back up just a little bit, as you kind of feel free to look at the plans and so you can kind of familiarize yourself with where we're heading. But a quick introduction on myself for those who may not know. So I've been the Director of Lacey Maker Space since June of 2021. And I have very deep roots in Thurston County as a maker myself, as an artist. I also serve on the Olympia Arts, Olympia Art Space Alliance Board. So I continue to be an advocate for artists and makers and the entire community, getting them studio space and exhibition space. And I'm so glad to be bridging that creative economy, bringing that creative economy into this area as well and into the maker space. I'm seeing more and more artists come, as well as folks wanting to develop their own businesses and the workforce training. So I'm very, very pleased and proud of that. And of course, so as many of you know too, I'm sure you all are very well, well aware that very soon after I started, the very first of several game changers, I can't say how many times I said, "This is a game changer." We've had, we've been able to say that a lot for the last several years, a couple of years. But we received that first $1 million grant from the EDA CARES Act to start purchasing the high, the high-level state-of-the-art equipment. We're about halfway through. It's a three-year grant cycle. We're about two years through now. And about halfway through the grant and purchasing some of that equipment. So we're starting to see some of the impacts already that what we have is in place. And of course, with the expansion, things coming, it's only going to get, it's only going to accelerate. So to get to this slide, basically, so what, as soon as we got that grant, we quickly realized, of course, where's it all going to go? And so we're so grateful that St. Martin's, of course, was able to relocate the facilities department quicker, sooner than we had anticipated. And that was a, that was a really great game changer. And, and then, so of course, and then so while we were first initially discussing the phasing of the construction plan and the expansion, we were thinking, well, we're only going to get that little yellow space for a couple of years. And we might only, maybe then we'll get a little bit more space. But with that combination, as well as, again, a major thank you to the city of Lacey for you helping right, get us on that omnibus funding, which we found out we got right in December of 2022, yet another one of those game changers. And so once we realized we got that funding, I think it changed. It's been a long time to get to where we're at in developing the expansion. Because again, we were talking about these smaller phases. We thought we'd only have that yellow main workshop space. And then once we found out we got the whole building, we kind of restructured what we were, our plans, and especially then when we knew we had the funding available. So now we're at, we're at where we at, we are today. Again, we, you know, we, it took a little while to get to where construction started just, just this last month, because of course, once we got the funding, then we needed to really understand the, the stipulations, the, the conditions of that grant. We were able to get St. Martin's to become the sub recipients and to oversee the project. And here we are today. Finally, construction has started. Trenches have been dug for floor outlets. So now we're not running extension cords for major equipment. I, the walls are starting to get built next week, from what I understand. Some of the new walls in that larger, that's classroom area and the digital lab. We just, we're, we're just beyond excitement with what's coming up. And so the, the, the hope is that we're on track right now. Everything scheduled is on track to be done by middle of January 2024. So very exciting, very exciting news on that. So I'll, I'll keep going, I guess, and I, because I think there's question and answers at the end, right? But feel free, of course, if anyone has any questions. But next slide. So one of the exciting things, oh, was there-
Just going to point out that, on that floor plan, one of the really key issues of that is being able to use the Old Zavro Hall and create space for the woodworking or dust equipment, space for metal manufacturing, space for a digital lab where it's clean. You get all your more technical equipment in there, so it's not shared with the woodworking equipment and the classroom. The classroom is going to be key because you're going to be able to help teach classes for individuals to learn the programming and the basics. But also too, we'll be able to partner with other workforce training providers to be able to come in and hold classes in advanced manufacturing or other type of things that are needed skills within the workforce. So it really creates a very dynamic facility that's now that's going to be, you know, excited to see it open up and see how we can bring all these other partners in to provide those work-scale trainings.
Thank you for-
Are you open at all now during the construction or yet?
We are. We are open three and a half days a week, and all we are in right now is in that yellow spot. And, and we are in a bit of a productive phase at the moment. But luckily, so far, our members are staying very devoted and very, very loyal to us. We're still getting new members, which he'll talk about in a moment too. We have mainly the wood, woodworking area. And thank you, I should have spent a little more time to explain that expansion. But the fact that all of what we've been trying to do has just been in this 3,500 square feet, and now we're going to 9,600 square feet. We're tripling our footprint. And so to have those specialized dedicated areas where we'll be able to have, you know, triple the membership we base, we have now, because we can have classes going on in the textiles lab. You have textiles classroom going on, a welding class going on, and then still have the main workshop open. So we'll be able to serve more people, and of course, we're going to have more of that equipment available to spread out. And so we'll be able to serve the community a lot better. So, yeah.
What is the current membership for the Maker Space?
Yes, we have a slide to talk about that a little, a little bit more, the statistics later. But right now, we're at 185 members. So really, I think that's a very strong-
Do we anticipate, what, what has been the trend for the last several years?
Oh, just to give a good example, when I-
On the decline.
Sure, sorry. When I started in June 2021, we had 45 members, and we have 185 now. And so that's just give you, I think that gives you a good indicator. And that's again with, you know, three and a half days a week and 3,500 square feet. And so, you know, that's one of the, you know, these, as we talked about, the strategic plan that we've been developing and the revenue streams. We, we anticipate that that number will easily at least double, you know, within the next year and beyond. So-
And when we first decided to make the launch-
Yeah.
Make the launch and open the, the doors, our target was to have around 95 to 100 memberships. Those memberships were rolling, you know, be rolling, but 95 to 100 because of the space we have. It's a testament to the work that Michelle and everybody that's working at the space be able to accommodate more members, get them in and cycle through, and then as the space develops and get all of Zavro Hall, now we can see it increasing as well.
And I think we'll, we'll share too in some of the other slides, the other-
Do we have a program to, to? Okay, yeah. Do we have a, a program to help folks that may not be able to afford membership but would benefit from utilizing the Maker Space?
We do. That's, that's another slide coming up as well, but we-
Is that the next slide?
Coming up very soon. You're anticipating all the questions. This is great.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, I'll, I'll come back to that. How about that? Because we are, I'm very proud to-
Okay, I'll, I'll be quiet.
No, you're totally fine. It's all good.
Great, quiet now.
I'm glad that I'm going to be answering all these questions. So one of the very exciting things that we, a very recent development, we just got in the last couple of weeks, is that we're now a funding partner with the community for the South Pigeon Sound Community Foundation. They've awarded us $2,000 for their community foundation funding. But we're also going to be part of their Give Local campaign. And so as part of that campaign, I launched, we launched a survey recently to our members and asking some very key questions, because I realizing I've been wanting to change the narrative myself and the information I'm getting from our members, not just how did you find us? But what I want to know, and I think what, what everyone at this table wants to know beyond is, how are we making an impact and how are we making a difference? So these are just a few of some of the, the, the recent testimonials that have come from folks. But I wanted to speak specifically to a couple that are some Lacey residents. So out of the 22, the 20-ish, 24 surveys we received back so far, every single one of them has spoken to the collaborative environment that we have and that there are many, there, there are several people that are already starting to figure out how to grow their ideas into income sources. I'm sort of very proud of that. Blake is one of our newer members. He's only been there for the last six months. He's starting a business right now. He's a Lacey resident making these amazingly intricate wooden mandalas. And they're, they're very large. They're like 24 inches by 18, about as big as our current bed is. And there are layers of engraved wood. And so he is starting to make these, these products out of our space. And he's also starting to launch those in, in, in various venues on his own. There's Kyle, who's an Isqali Indian Tribe member. He's been coming in quite a bit lately. We're really building some strong partnerships with the tribe. He's super excited to be learning the CNC equipment. And he's been, he's also part of their, the, the new youth programming that they've got there at the, on the Indian Tribe, at the Isqali Tribe, as well as what they're doing with their new state park. So we're very excited to be able to be helping him and several of the other tribal members enhance their skills as well. And then just another, another local resident, John, who's also found us fairly recently. He's moved, he moved to town, and he's already finding, he's made new friendships through the Maker Space. He's helping his sister with some upscaling some of her products for her business, as well as just personally enjoying learning to make a lot of new things. He's learning from other members, not just our staff. So, next slide. This one, I think, is a really telling thing as well. This is, this is, I, this is only some of the many business partners that we're already starting to work with out of the Lacey Maker Space. What I want to speak to specifically in the previous slide was John in the upper-left corner. He's coming down here from Tacoma, and I actually had a talk with his business partner who lives in Seattle. They both were members of other Maker Spaces and canceled their memberships, and they travel to Lacey and to the Lacey Maker Space because of the equipment we have available. And they are making this really cool, open-source device that basically is going to enhance gaming experience when you have your virtual goggles on and how you can get a little dazy. They're, they're developing this unit that you can wear on your body, and it will anticipate your weight and your body size and all of these things to help you have a more immersive experience. So they have just shipped that product off to the FCC testing houses, and they expect if all goes well, they'll be launching that product by January. And so they're very excited, and they both, again, had just nothing but positive reviews. And they said they're coming here because we are the place that has that stuff available for them. And they both have also said, you know, if they can, going back to this idea of becoming regionally known and nationally known as this kind of, as this sort of business incubator. They've also said, you know, if we can find someplace locally that could help us package and ship those items, that they would bring that business here to, as well, to Lacey. So. And then another, another one that's not listed on here is, there's two, there's two members right now, Marshall and Dave. Both have been coming to the EDC and the CVNI, and they're programming to start, to see about starting businesses on products they've been developing. And to your question, Ed, about, about memberships and affordability, we're just about to launch a partnership with Timberland Regional Library in November, where we're going to have each branch, Olympia, Lacey, Tomwater, are going to have two basic memberships available for anybody who's a Timberland Regional Library cardholder. So if you can afford a membership, the first place I mean, we're going to send you to is the library. But also, we're part of some of the other revenue streams we're talking about, are creating some business sponsorships that we can create a scholarship program so that I don't ever have to turn anyone away, which presently, we don't anyways. I will never say no to somebody. We'll figure out a way to get you in our doors. Because I want, anyone who wants to better their skills is going to be welcome at the Maker Space.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's awesome.
Another really exciting partnership is Experience Olympia and Beyond. They actually are, they wanted, they've, we've been talking with them about seeing, becoming a, a spot for, they, they, when they're creating tourism packages. So when somebody comes to this area and they're like, I want to have, there's the foodie package that they might go to the local restaurants, but they want to have a creative package where they might come on Saturdays to the Lacey Maker Space, and we're going to have a kind of prepackaged couple of events that somebody can make, you know, a, a product from beginning to end. It might be make a series of t-shirts or, yeah, or, you know, something on, you know, a couple of mugs or something like that. So you'll have this tourism package where people will be coming here and coming to the Maker Space and having that experience. So. And then lastly, just to mention, you know, we have right now, it was with the Holiday Makers Market, which is another, of course, EDC program. And we hosted that last year at our site. We won't be able to do that now that we have all this amazing equipment in the space, but we are working to partner with them again. And we actually have more businesses that are, want to get involved in that. And then we have at least, at least one inquiry a week right now that is somebody wanting to do fabrication or prototyping out of our space. So again, there's people wanting to have an idea that they want to maybe bring to market, you know, bring into a 3D form and to market, as well as folks wanting to fab, us to fabricate things for them. So. Very exciting. Next slide. So just, we wanted to just kind of reiterate this idea. Oh, did we miss the nationally recognized one? Yeah, that one. Just, I just wanted to, you know, we wanted to speak to this too, because as we've been doing a lot of research, both as we're developing the workforce training programs. So Ajax is very, is committed. Ajax is an advanced manufacturing program. They've been based in Spokane and Seattle. They are very interested in moving into the South Pigeon Sound area. They are committed to teaching of their first cohort at the Maker Space in partnership just with us in, in early 2024 for welding, to do welding program for transitioning military. We're very, very excited with, about that. And we've also met recently with the folks from Anew and Machinist Institute that are also interested. So we've got the workforce training thing happening. But I just want to point out a couple of key highlights. You know, we've had Senator Patty Murray come and visit the Maker Space because of all of our efforts. And as we were doing our research, again, kind of finalizing this last equipment recalibration and just doing this research for workforce development, there's very, very few Maker Spaces in the country that are doing things on the level that we are. And so the idea of having that happening here in Lacey is really exciting. I think, I think we're reaching that goal of having folks come here for that innovation experience. So. And then tomorrow, I'm also touring, just an example again of these, the kinds of services we can provide for this area, I think, are in part, hopefully, with what you all have been hoping we can do is Sierra Pacific Industries is interested, possibly. You're going to be doing a tour with Jacqueline to talk about maybe a custom training program that we can do for them. Simpson Doors has expressed a lot of interest as well. So very exciting. Yeah, sorry. Next slide. So just to kind of reiterate a little bit about some of the memberships stats that were being asked. So as I mentioned, when I started, there was around 45. We now have, we have about 185. And as I mentioned, we might lose one or two right now because the hours are, you know, people kind of always come, you know, it ebbs and flows a little bit. We still signing up at least a couple every week, new people signing up. We had a new student membership yesterday. About half of our membership is studying strong, staying strong at student and military. And we're also continuing to build that strong connection with the Isqali Indian Tribe, as well as other tribal communities we're really hoping to build relationships with and getting them in the door, as well as us taking some of our trainings to them, something that's another avenue that we're exploring. But what this shows me personally is that, I think, again, we're, we're, we're kind of helping advance that goal that Lacey is going to be known as this innovation hub, that people are coming here. You know, not only they come into the Maker Space, they're, you know, they're having lunch or dinner at your, at the other businesses in town. They're, they're buying their materials from other local businesses that I'm doing partnerships with now. There are several businesses that are willing to offer discounts for our members. So, you know, we're really keeping that ecosystem local and supporting local business. So. And then the final slide is just kind of a little amalgamation of some pictures of some happy people. But just, I just, again, want to reiterate, you know, I'm, I very, personally, I'm very, very grateful, again, and very proud of what we've been able to accomplish already, despite limited hours, despite, you know, construction happening and limited equipment. I think we're doing a lot, and I'm very excited for what's coming. You know, and the other work we've been doing right now is really, we've been identifying and solidifying our revenue streams. We have seven solid revenue streams that we anticipate really being able to build on once we're done with our expansion. You know, which is only a few months away now at this point, and that we've submitted a draft of that strategic plan so far. And Sean's going to talk about that for a few more minutes. But the last thing I just want to say real quick, and before I hand it back to Sean, is just, again, thank you, thank you, all of you. And want to invite each of you individually and as a group, if you would love to come by the Maker Space for a private tour, or we can do a fun little activity sometime. We can, I'd love to have you all over there again. I know many of you have been, but yeah.
I enjoyed myself at the Christmas Bazaar last year, I think it was. And so now it's the whole building, right? What's that square footage, 48?
96. We're going from 35 to 96. Yeah.
Awesome. That's great.
Thanks.
Very cool. Well, I remember the first time I heard of the word Maker Space. It was actually myself, Mike, Cynthia Pratt, and Councilmember Jeff Gadman at the time. We were in Pittsburgh, and we heard about, oh, you need to check out this new, you know, I did this new Maker Space and being, you know, all this stuff. And I went and toured Maker Space, and I was like, man, that's so cool. Come back, and sure enough, Rick's already like, oh, that's already over. Be like, at the same time, and it just, it just felt like very serendipitous. But it's so amazing to be able to have this idea of something cool you want to see in your community and it actually happened, right? I mean, it's just like, we, we think of cool stuff all the time. You know, it actually happening on this scale is, is something else. And I think it's what really makes Lacey special, and it starts with, you know, having- And it starts with, you know, having, you know, great staff who believe and, and, you know, and. And make your community better and through innovation like this. And so it's been so cool to. Think about it and to now see where it's at. You know, it's just, that's amazing.
I would say it really doesn't matter whose idea it was as long as it's fruition, right?
Just so cool.
The way that Rick tried to one-up us.
Well, I think it was, I think it was the theme of conferences that year. We had the National League of Cities. I attended a national planning conference. I talked about. Makerspace being a vehicle for like urban renewal and building economic foundations. Graham Sacreson attended a school board conference. Boeing, he came back and we all kind of had these ideas coming back and we started talking and all of a sudden these ideas became into partnerships. And I want to, also don't want to forget, there was a years ago. Uh, a trip organized by the Community College, go look at Indian River State College and look at the whole ecosystem and how you piece those things together from. Opportunity for like a Makerspace, but you also need the business support, development and coaching. You also need the research and development. These other pieces. And we realized we had all these pieces in our community. How do we connect them all and create a place where they can all kind of converge? The Makerspace is one of those places. We're going to be building more in the area. But really, when you have the, an opportunity for somebody to come in and learn a skill, a hobby or uh. Uh, develop an idea, they have all the resources there to help them. Develop but protect that intellectual property going forward. And it's really a testament of the community partnerships coming together to make this happen.
So cool.
Yeah. Did, was there any more that we should add about this strategic plan or did we miss anything that?
Um, I, I think just to, to, to sort of amplify what Rick is saying. So just on Wednesday, I had a gentleman come in. He moved here from Florida recently to retire and he got a membership at the Makerspace, started working on the lathe. He's a woodworker. Um, and he walked in and he says, I want to start a business. And so now we have, he went through his, the intro to business course right away. He's got a scholarship for the next step. Training and he's, you know, will help him start that business. And so that's really. The, the, the connection and, and points. We have all of the things to support. It's just, you know, the, you know, when you connect them together like Rick says, then. He starts to amplify the entire system and, and it really works well. Um, just to circle back to the strategic plans. We have created a strategic plan. We've sent that out. It is, you know, in draft phase, so we need to finalize it still, but. Ideally, what we did that i- in response to is understanding that, you know, this space needs to be financially sustainable on its own. And so with the increase in space, we anticipated increase in membership. And so we've. Talked about generating a bunch of different revenue streams that are in-house, that are not reliant on outside money, that aren't reliant on grants, that are based on membership. Including kits for members. People ask every day, what should I make? And here's a kit. And so there's a, a huge opportunity for retail, for uh, selling. You know, higher grade wood and, and metals and things for them to work with. Um, there's also a really good opportunity right now for business memberships. And so we have a lot of interest from businesses that want to have. A membership for five of their employees or twenty of their employees. And so that's another revenue stream. And so in the strategic plan. You'll see that we've identified these really, you know. Not too far-fetched revenue streams are pretty grounded in reality. I mean, the, we, I'm, I did a, I, I made sure that we didn't overestimate anything. In our projections to be as close to reality as possible. We already have those revenue streams in the works.
One, one farm number is a good example of a business coming in, using the Makerspace to train their employees and figure out how to mod a new palletting system that they're created. Uh, for retail purposes or, or TI purposes.
Is the strategic plan, you said it's in, it's not finalized yet. So is it on your website that we can look at it or not?
I will send it out to the council.
And this is, this is a just, I, I know everyone on council is super excited about this. And I think we've all been huge supporters since the beginning. This is awesome for the community.
Yep. And in that strategic plan, you'll see the financial projections and, you know, the space will really. Start to be able to stand alone in twenty twenty five, but because of construction. Because it takes time to, you know, get all the equipment set up, you know, we probably won't be fully operational in January. And we have to start all the training programs and we have to, you know, get all of these ducks in a row. And so there's going to be a gap there. That we need to, you know what I mean, you know, find funding for. So.
Yeah, reinforce because. This, there's been a lot of transition over the last uh, whole month, but going into this uh, process where looking at Sean said, trying to. Set it up to be a sustainable funding model in twenty twenty five. However. There's a lot of work just to work on design and plans and bringing in the congressional uh, uh, dollars to be had to also pivot and figure out how to. Um, uh, meet all the requirements there. So there's a lost a little bit of time of developing some of these, those funding streams. And now we're under construction. So one of the things to maybe, uh, look to the council is. In the, in the past several years, we've, the city's been able to provide operational dollars um, to help. Build, build the foundation for, you know, this effort until looking in twenty twenty five. See if the council is willing, we could also combine, you know, additional dollars uh, moving forward.
What's, what's that dollar number?
I would look up at the past, we were looking at about two hundred thousand dollars. And the net provides a capacity to continue to build those other funding streams and partnerships.
That's why we have the Economic Development Fund, which is where we have assessed our reserves to set, you know. Or things like this. I, I think that, you know, um. Continues to make a good investment in our community without funds. So I don't see why, um. I think that'd be very reasonable for us to ask to the city.
Very wise investment. I think so too.
Also impressed with the um, the Chicago's M-Hub and how they were able to raise a one point, let's just call it one point five billion in capital. Um, have you guys dug into how they, how they accomplished that? They're a really big city.
I have not yet. That's one of my, you know, that's one of the things, that's one of the next things I want to do in my free time. Is uh, make some of those connections, actually make some physical connections with those people or personal connections, reach out to them and, and understand better. How they do what they do, you know, but I know that they, it's a, I know it's, yeah. But then I think part of it is, the, the other thing, the thing that I've seen it, the, so far, the, the theme that I've seen from all of them too is that they. They, they run similarly on the same kinds of levels of support that we get, you know, from municipalities and from, you know, from business members and. People see that investment and they keep investing in that and the investment is paid back, I think. Well.
The bigger is, we only expected to get, you know, a billion.
By twenty twenty five, okay.
The way we have it set up is, is the right way for success, right? You know, it's all about partnerships. And, and then take advantage of the partnerships and expanding and expanding, you know, you know, and so um. You know, we have a very impressive list of, of, of partners and I'm sure that will continue to grow as more resources come online. Um. You know, we've talked about um, actually expansion at the building. And I remember seeing a timeline, uh, are you, where are we at on looking at that expansion?
Thank you for asking. Yeah, yeah.
I know it's in the future, but yeah, let's get, exactly, exactly, but.
Well, but I'm, I'm actually grateful the way that that all worked out. So of course, you know, when we, first thing was when we looked at our equipment. We realized the, the big equipment, the, the HOS CNC mills and things. We weren't going to go in there, weren't going to fit. And also I don't want to, SPSCs already got their machining program. So I'm glad we took those off the list. And then we could fit everything within the current footprint. But then of course, funding, the ability, we, we needed all that we had just to get the, all the power and utilities in the existing building. Um, one of the things we have done though, we've definitely planned out kind of in preparation for that phase two. One of the trenches that they just dug is actually to have. Uh, water and utilities into that building should we get that, that idea. So there's kind of an ellipsis on the face too. We don't have a target yet. I actually am really grateful, the way that I look at it from a strategic point as the director is like. Let's build these, let's build more partnerships, let's build more interest and let's see where we're at in three to five years. Three years even, we can kind of start looking at like, oh, solar's huge or, you know, um, ADUs or, you know, what's, what will be the big thing that's, that is coming? We all know there's more industry coming to this region. So let's, we'll have the opportunity then to build kind of, we can, I think we can maybe. Get the right partner, yeah, and say even, hey, you guys can have this space. Let's, let's do something together. So.
Technology and equipment could be changing by then too.
It already has. Yeah.
And one of the things that's nice is on the west end of the building, that future expansion phase. And with working with Forma, it's the project designed to be able to facilitate that expansion. Uh, St. Martin's Abbey has already approved that expansion. So when it's ready to move forward. And then at that time. You know, depending on what it is, it may be a little bit bigger or smaller depending on what the needs are, but that creates that opportunity and flexibility.
Running the lines now. So you don't have to dig again.
Exactly. Yeah.
It's going to save money. It's going to make it easier to expand later.
Exactly. So grateful for that.
With, with sets being um, completely finalized and the EDD, um, you know, basically being authorized and ready to. Kind of move forward in this next uh, Q four, um, is, is Makerspace something that will qualify for some of that funding?
It could, it could because we look at that five county area, showing that we can serve that five county with some of the memberships we currently have. It could help with workforce training dollars and connect people to those skills in the building, especially in those more uh, rural, rural depressed county areas.
I think it's on that chart, I think over thirty percent of the users are outside the county already.
And the other testament to that too is part of the, this remodel, you had the million dollars of funding from the Congressional for expanding. Three hundred thousand dollars from the city of Lacy goes towards, and then uh, it was uh, two hundred thousand dollars from the Cheney Foundation.
Uh, one hundred.
One hundred thousand.
One hundred thousand.
And then from the Bay Travis. So the Cheney Foundation, that, that's, you know, significant because uh, they looked at what. What the Makerspace was doing and the partnerships and the area they're serviced and they uh, awarded that hundred thousand dollars. Cheney Foundation is located out of Tacoma.
Yeah, they, they typically don't step out of that.
They don't step out of Pierce County.
Yeah.
This is the first time they funded something outside of, outside of the county. And so now that's another partnership and can start building. Those blocks um, in support of this Makerspace. So that's another piece is, I, I think it's significant in addition to the membership locations that we're drawing from.
And they've definitely indicated that we could definitely consider another ask with them in the future.
Question. So through the EDC and the Chamber, you're probably also connected with Pack Mountain, right? The five county organization. I don't know if they're continuing to do it, but pre-COVID, they did a survey of like workforce needs. So that they could forecast what skills the workforce is going to need in the near future, right? They did a survey of a whole bunch of different businesses. If they're still doing that, are we gathering that data so that you know what skills you might want to be training people on? Are you already thinking of that?
Definitely.
I might be just catching up to you.
No, definitely Pack Mountain, of course, where we do work with them. I know um, Naomi now works over there, worked with the EDC for a while. She's in regular. Communication with us as well, but we definitely keep track of those. And the Thurston Chamber, of course, too. We just. Those are, I should have mentioned those as well as other partners that we do. Keep in touch with and meet with and, and get, um, you know, William was more and. He's off, given us a lot of advice through the time of making, you know, making some, we've made some, some tweaks based on some really great feedback we've gotten from them to be more supportive for workforce development.
First thing this morning too, that William and Megan were from Pack Mountain were at, and Megan pulled me aside and mentioned that they had some additional funding coming, taking hold back into. Uh, some of the work in the Makerspace in terms of training.
Love it. Well, thank you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out and I appreciate it.
Thank you everybody for being here.
I know. It's amazing how quickly ten dozen square feet can fill up. I'm still like, we don't have enough room.
Additional parking?
Um, not yet. That's definitely, that's in the two, that's in the ellipsis as well, but we're working with the College on. Yes. And the goal, once we have the roundabout.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep. Pretty cool. Pretty cool. Right? I mean. So, absolutely. Um, so next up is the Great Cuyahoga Park. Uh, there's one update. This is um. Great timing. Obviously, we talked about this a little bit. We were, we're expecting uh, the. Uh, one A to be built next year, but now we need to hear what the latest is on that. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks for having us. I'm Ashley Smith. But I brought with me tonight Brett Bogard and he's the design engineer on the project. So he's here to help support any questions that you have.
So uh, that's just getting that queued up. I had a presentation at the Lacy Rotary this afternoon and one of the prime things that I talked about was like. Great Cuyahoga Park and saying great Cuyahoga quite a bit. I didn't realize that Greg was at the meeting. It costs them dollars for having to.
So at the end of the meeting.
That's hilarious. That's so true.
All right. So, uh, long anticipated update. Um, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, we were anticipating starting construction earlier than currently um. On the schedule. So wanted to give you an update on where we are with both the schedule and the budget for the project. Our original ninety percent design was completed on schedule in accordance with the, or in line with the master plan. However, we um, began the permitting process and met with Department of Ecology and realized that there were some issues with the. Um, the stormwater design, specifically the wetland uh, development permitting and mitigation. So we took a deeper dive on the um, details of the stormwater design and had a consultant take another look at it as well and ended up. Um, selecting one of the alternatives that included removing the detention pond entirely and going with a, a full dispersion approach instead.
Never made sense to me. Why would have big, open things of water in, in a park, right? That's. Surrounded by trees. It's like, I just see a mosquito like, just like horrible, horrible. It's just.
So, so then it's, in that case, are we rerouting water to the existing creek?
No, it's going to go into dispersion.
Kind of a filtration.
Stay, stay tuned. Um, so just, hello here. You remember the detention pond was kind of adjacent to Carpenter Road. Uh, next to the parking area. That was the original design and the master plan. So we looked at that a little more closely and um, after completing the water modeling for the site. The storm pond ended up having to be roughly ten feet deep. Um, so a huge excavation. Firing a lot of uh, removed material to be placed somewhere on the site. And additionally, it.
Exactly.
Uh, approached upon one of the wetland buffers that was identified in the southern boundary of the site. So it required quite a bit of mitigation in line with that. Okay, so the revised design, um, as you can see over here next to Carpenter Road, the stormwater pond is gone. And uh, what we've done instead is implemented a number of um, flow dispersion trenches. Um, these are uh, each fifty feet long and then um. Brett can kind of get into the technical aspect of how they, how they work if you want more information on that. Um, but we not only looked at Phase One A, which is the um. Blue outlined areas here, but also the full master plan with this design work. You know, comprehensively to meet the needs of future phases. So you can see um, all the different parking areas that are planned down the line with this approach as well. Um, the orange highlighted line there is the cross-country track. So we made sure that. Um, by rerouting some of those um, amenities that the route would still remain and be larger. Now, if you're not familiar with a flow dispersion, dispersal trench, this is an example of one in Oregon and kind of a similar setting. Uh, what it would look like on the surface. It's just that fifty foot line with piping underneath. And then this is a, an excerpt of the City of Lacy Stormwater Design Manual. That's to be like how those are developed.
It's probably for, better for the stream flows too, right? I mean.
Isn't, isn't some of the trail system crushed rock also?
Yes.
Will be kind of match, right?
Yes. For, for a number of reasons, this was really a no-brainer to take a pause and make sure that we were making the best choice for the, the full development of the park.
Detention ponds are so early two thousands.
Continue to source the wetland where dispersion trenches keep that flow going towards the wetland and keep that wetland sourced.
So the question came up, you know, in addition to the delay for construction, what this, what cost impact would be? Um, so we reviewed with the switching to the full dispersion approach. You can see here, that's this cost reduction item number two. Um, a conservative reduction was just over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, there was also a reduction in removing a lot of that wetland mitigation required. Um, and then we, because we were, you know. Pausing to change some of the things in the design, we also revised the emergency vehicle access for an additional cost reduction. Um, so you can see the total on a conservative estimate is roughly three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for in construction. Um, that's offset slightly by the redesign cost, which is only about thirty-five thousand dollars. So still it's a net positive for the project. Um, obviously there are some schedule impacts to redoing the heart of the design. So um, we are currently scheduled. To, we began the revised design already. I should start there and then we. To we began the revised design already. I should start there and then we are currently scheduled to have that completed by March of next year. Um, some of the schedule has been compressed by moving permitting further up. And then we, you know, we've estimated conservatively what those turnaround times would be to target um an advertisement and award next fall. So we are still at this point, even with the delay on schedule for construction in twenty twenty-five and opening in twenty twenty-five. Um, however, this is a a realistic um. Impact of of what we can expect with that delay. Uh, we'll open up to any questions council may have.
Good. Just one. Um, so the savings is great. My only question is, is the delay in construction going to eat up? Any of that savings?
Uh, in this scenario, the delay isn't significant enough um coupled with escalation to make a significant impact. And the the um the cost savings in construction that we've shown here estimated is on the conservative side. Um, you know, the consultants um. Did um show room for for more savings, but we're not showing that at this time until we've been.
So.
Surprise us in the end with more, we won't complain.
Is there any part of this phase one A that we could go out and cause? Not going to use the same contractor or all this, are you? But you are.
Mm-hmm.
You know, okay. One bid for for the trails for the.
Yes.
But you're not including the um disc golf course that's separate.
Uh, part of it is included. There's a partnership with the Disc Golf Group.
Yeah.
Uh, but the contract.
Right.
They're providing the nets, right?
Um, I would have to, I'll look on that and get back to you. Um. A large amount of the work is covered under the contract with the main trail and clearing the spot for each basket and tee.
Yeah.
And then the Disc Golf Association is providing some volunteer work to finesse the course, basically. There are other opportunities that I know Jen is is um running down for for volunteers um related to the trail and.
And we've got a bunch of volunteer work.
Who's the lead for the Disc Golf Association?
Oh, it's a Jen question, but the actually the the person who helped design the Disc Golf Course um is a professional. Uh, designer that was, um, he moved to the Midwest, but he's from here. And he agreed to come back and do it like pro bono. And I happen to know him through my cousin, which I set him up with Jen, which is how that how that happened. So that's totally cool that he's willing to come back and this is what he does for a living. He designs professional disc golf courses and he said. He'd come back and do it in his hometown. So.
So he's he's doing this pro bono?
Yeah, he's doing it pro bono. You know, and so it.
Right.
Now, anyway.
Him and the Disc Golf Association have have dedicated a lot of time helping us um develop the course and.
It's a big deal for them because it's can be one of those courses that they it's putting us on the map. You know, so they're really excited about having, you know, it's one of the few courses like this in this region where you can, you know. Um, so it's really, really, really cool.
It it's going to be huge. I can't wait. This is going to be exciting.
Oh, okay. So any other questions? I mean, I think it's really good that we got rid of the stormwater pension pond that, you know. And so in the end, you know, with the money that we're saving. Um, yeah, it's going to push us back a little bit, but um, you know, I see it was smart on the city to. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Okay, anything else? Thanks. Thanks for the update. So next up is our crime statistics chief. Councilman, can you see that?
Right, new escape button.
I don't see anything yet, chief.
It's working on it. The twenty-first of August, I swear. Uh, John, you helped everybody? I got it, but I can't share it. I can't escape out of it. I've got cold shoulder. I got that. There you go. Yes. You can see it now, right?
Yes, we are golden.
Hey, Golden's got, that's awesome. Okay. Well, I surely appreciate the time of the council this evening. Uh, we're going to talk about crime in the police department. Uh, I can tell you about twenty twenty-two stats. They're about three quarters old. So we're going to go through that relatively quickly. Um, we kind of talked about year-to-date stats where we're at and how that affects the police department and how that affects the model of service delivery. And talk about staffing and some other issues along the way. That makes sense. Okay, let's talk about population. So as you know, we've added since twenty sixteen about ten thousand people. Into twenty twenty-two and now we're closer to sixty thousand. So let's. Do we have any idea when the new population forecast comes out for twenty-three? I mean, six point two percent is a huge increase. Over one year, but we didn't. When we went out and and looked at all the multifamily that's being built, it's uh you're like, oh, yeah, okay, that makes sense, but do we have an idea when?
The preliminary estimates from OFM generally comes out in March, April of the following year, so twenty twenty-four April. And then finalized by June, end of June, twenty twenty-four.
So we won't know this till June next year.
Because then they're going to take. Through January, all we submit all the reports for building permits to them and then they verify with us the accuracy and and then. Process the needed statewide.
So we're about seventeen hundred people away from sixty thousand. Pretty sure we're going to.
We need to get that.
So let's look at just twenty twenty-two uh this average for overall crime per capita and that's number of crimes per thousand residents per community. For the state average, it was sixty-seven point five crimes per thousand residents. Looking at our comparators, Olympia is eighty-seven point five crimes per thousand. Uh, Tom Water, sixty-six point eight. Lakewood, obviously a bit higher. Tualt, much higher. City of Lacey again is lower than the state average and from our comparison cities. That's good. That's awesome. We like seeing that. Now, looking at, uh, this is a profile of our crime per per capita over the years. So through twenty sixteen through last year. Again, you've got that kind of bowl effect, but still we're below the highest we've seen, which is twenty sixteen. Remember back then we had ten thousand less people. Right? So that that's quite a high crack rate. Uh, so we're doing good. That's the trend I like to see. So again, you have COVID years, legislative issues, other things that affect those numbers, but overall we're staying fairly consistent. Um, over this time span. Going into violent crime, again, this is not property crime, violent crime. So your robberies, your assaults, your forcible sex acts, those type of things. Um, state average is four point one violent crimes per thousand members of the population statewide. Again. Uh, comparison cities Olympia over the standard of four is five point four three. Tom Water, two point three two. Lakewood, much higher. To all at the state average. Lacey again, two point two five, lowest of much compared to cities. Again, a very safe city to live in. Want to see. That's fantastic.
That's amazing that we're lower than Tom Water. Or no, we're we're kind of, we're kind of even keel. I'm sorry. We're kind of even keel with Tom Water. I just find that amazing.
We're a good company. So let's look at uh property crimes. So if you look at larceny, which is one of our largest drivers of of nonviolent crimes. Larcenies are a variety of thefts, everything shoplifting to stolen bikes off the street, all sorts of things like along those lines. That's our largest category of numbers, actually. Um, makes up at least eight categories. Again, we have this bowl effect, right? So. Of the property crime, we're lower than everybody else. That's our significant driver. And now we're starting to see numbers back that we saw back in twenty sixteen. We got this bowl of them. And that is a significant increase over twenty twenty-one coming out of the pandemic. A lot of legislative reform. Grand Theft Auto goes into this. Can't pursue. People get a car, all that's in free. You can't touch them. And you see people starting to steal cars to not perform crime, not just steal car in general. I I understand that, but we're at high mark before this year is thirteen sixty-three. We made significant decreases, right? All the way. And then, of course, during the pandemic, you'd expect some of that stuff to be down a little bit. Um, and as we get out, it raised back up, but seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. For the most part, we saw it dip. What what did we do different from sixteen to seventeen and eighteen? No, not that legislation didn't come affect.
No, it's afterward. That's why it went up. Part of it, part of the reason.
I know.
Why it go down?
But why they go down in seventy and eighteen? Right? We still understand my how it could maybe go back up, but what what did we do different? Uh, I'm not sure that. I think the environment was what's different, right? As you transition from a small city, very residential based, right? So single-family homes, low density, spread over a larger area, you have a different crime profile, right? That's a small, smaller city. You've now trying, you're transitioning into a mid-sized city, I think fifty thousand or above is considered midsize. Now you're seeing. More stuff. You got more commercial activity. You have more opportunity for theft. You have more opportunity for other types of crimes. Um, you have. Density issues started started to creep in. Um, you're also starting to have a transition from single-family homes into multifamily homes into mixed commercial residential. Type complexes. Those tend to cause more crime issues than single-family residences. Just from a septet of environmental design. So that all goes into the why it's rising. Right. I just wasn't sure why it rocked.
I'm I'm wondering if economic circumstances play a part in this also, specifically with larcenies. If if the economy is good, if. Employment is high, unemployment is low, do you see less theft?
I would like to say that, but our employment is like a three percent and theft is through the roof right now. Yeah. Um, so it's people that want to work too, isn't it? But the problem is there's no penalty for it. There's law avenues to steal stolen goods. You can't stop a shoplifter. Um, if your store employees are being told not to stop shoplifters, um, there's only so many officers to go out and respond to shoplifting. Um, it's it's really a capacity issue. So there are some some situations that that's why I say the environment has changed quite a bit. Burglaries, we're seeing the same thing again. The majority of our burglaries are sixty percent of them.
I think you brought up a good point there where you said there's only a certain amount of officers that, you know, available to do theft. Particularly because if everybody was available, then other things would lack like. Traffic control or accidents or, you know, real violent crimes, you know?
Staffing plays a huge role. We're definitely going to talk about staffing. Um, again, with burglaries, we're seeing that kind of bowl effect. Was decreased during COVID. People were home, right? Hard to break into a house if someone's living there, right? Businesses weren't good targets because they weren't receiving goods to get stolen. So you had a big decrease and now. We're seeing a lot of burglaries, mostly commercial. That that's our big upswing right now there as far as going from twenty, pre-pre-COVID to post-COVID.
Sorry if you said this, but is burglary a subcategory of larceny or is it a different kind of thing?
It's a different crime because it involves breaking into a structure.
Okay, that's the definitional difference.
So theft, breaking into the structure, getting into a structure, then theft. Auto thefts through the roof. And this is a function of legislation, right? The fact that. As I was speaking to, new legislative reforms happened and said, hey, we don't want you to do pursuits. And frankly, Lacey did not get involved in a lot of pursuits anyway, but once the perception was out there in the criminal community that, hey, if you get in a car, they can't stop you. We're not immune from that. And so that's what's happened. Now, the interesting part of cars that are getting stolen, we're recovering eighty percent of the stolen. So they're just using them for getting from point A to point B to commit crime. Versus stealing and stripping for parts.
Not being stripped. So when you get them back, they're still whole for the most part?
Or trashed. They drive them to down to the rims. Go or drive them into the building. That's what I mean. They use them to commit theft. Um. The getaway car, we're seeing all sorts of stuff. It's just not uncommon. Almost every car we have crooked and it's going to be a stolen car or some shape, some form or shape.
And chief, that that number, I'm assuming is on the rise statewide, a big time theft.
This is twenty twenty-two. I'm going to talk a little about year-to-date a little bit.
Okay.
But this is what we were saying in twenty twenty-two. So let's end December thirty-first of last year.
These are Lacey numbers.
And these are all Lacey numbers that I'm showing you right now. The statewide, yeah, auto theft was through the roof. Double, triple throughout the state. Uh, again, assaults are our big drivers for violent crimes. Uh, that's where we see our numbers. Uh, here we started seeing a dramatic increase in reported domestic violence. We saw that uh as people were coming out of lockdown. Uh, they were they're more likely to report uh domestic violence. So as we saw that small jump, this jump. In the section here. So an additional twenty-three and twenty-one and additional forty-one crimes reported in twenty twenty-two. Uh, simple assaults, it it's fairly consistent. I mean, there's some variation there, but it's within a band going back and forth. Destruction of property, that's kind of a large category. A lot of times people attempt crimes, they don't succeed, but they damage what they're trying to take. Right? So uh this can sit, this concludes graffiti, a a damage to windows, breaking down doors, not taking anything, no loss. The you get you get to it as it's it's an attempt only. So it goes down destruction of property. Um, again, this the general rise in crime, that's where we you would expect to see. Narcotics offenses tanked. Blade decision is a big driver of this. Obviously, twenty twenty, then the blade decision came in in twenty twenty-one. Uh, invalidating the state law and that was not fixed until August of this year. It's now a misdemeanor. It's a totally different structure now that we're still working on navigating our way through. It's now all misdemeanors. Uh. Uh, Councilman Stedman, you asked me about arrest data for twenty twenty-two, the last council meeting. Uh, what we're seeing is people in the mid-thirties committing most, those are the variety, the majority of our arrests. Are people in their mid-thirties. You'd think they'd know better by that age, but uh you would think younger towards younger demographic, but not in our jurisdiction, what we see really is in the thirties. Or maybe they think they're getting good at it. Getting caught, they're not.
Getting too confident.
I'll never get. Well, so let's talk about factors impacting crime. So the city population growth, as I said, we are growing city, greater population, you would anticipate uh more crime, frankly. Um, more to to do crime. Uh, city's transitioning from small, small town to mid-sized city. We spoke about that. There's density issues. There's different uses. Land use issues going on. Um, it's a different model policing. Uh, COVID COVID restrictions really impacted us quite a bit. Um, and we're still working through some of the after effects of those COVID restrictions. Understand during COVID, didn't have officers doing a lot of traffic stops, not a lot of pedestrian counters that weren't required. Now you have generational officers, there's two, three-year officers came through, they were used to it. It's now we're training them on how to do proactive policing. So you'll now see some of those numbers start to rise, but it's kind of flatlined a little bit. Uh, declining uh police staffing ratios. If your number of officers stays constant and your population goes up, that ratio goes down. Um, and we're going to speak to that a little bit. Uh, increased policing shortages. Uh, it's national, it's statewide, it's regional and it's local. We are indefinitely impacted and I will speak to that. And it takes a long time to replace police officers. It takes a long time. And I will show you a poor man's version of a Gantt chart to illustrate that point. And uh policing reforms definitely had an impact and created a need for more officers. So in twenty twenty-one, the first um attempt at at policing reform. They want to take away officers' ability to do community caretaking. It was only only deal with people are committing crimes, right? That really impacted our ability to do um uh community area policing. I mean, which is the core of what Lacey does. That's really our secret sauce. That's what keeps our 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 crime low is our our ability to interact, community being willing to talk to us and interact. Community being willing to talk to us, interact with us, and tell us what's going on. Um that's really key to our success. So if we can't do community area policing, that really impacts us. Uh fortunately, that was changed, and in twenty twenty-two, we got the return of community caretaking. However, a lot of new reform as far as de-escalation before any uses of force. Now, pretty much every radio call now, any call for service, where we're going to need to take action, is a multiple officer call. You would like to think it's two, but lots is three or four officers. That's an entire shift sometimes for us. It's very common for us to have three officers and a supervisor based on our minimal staffing right now. So that's one incident in a seventeen-square-mile city. That is really significant. So again, relaxing penalties for criminal behavior, um this again creates the perception in the criminal community that there's no consequences for their actions. Hey, I'm good to go. I mean, all right, you catch me, but I'm gonna be out for the, you're gonna still writing the report, I'm gonna be out. And we saw that during COVID, literally, we would arrest auto theft suspects. And we would call this if we get booked, and they would let us book them for because of COVID restrictions. And they'd be walking down the road, we're still towing the car, next thing we know, we heard about a car being stolen. Hey, guess who towed that car? So now we're chasing that guy again. So that would happen repeatedly. Um so that is a concern. Uh and that really led towards auto theft being increasing and larceny increases.
The third thing that I don't see on here is the increase in organized crime. And we know that for a fact, we saw organized crime uh go through the roof during during COVID as well on retail side.
I do not disagree. In fact, that's one of the things I've talked about quite a bit, is um our need to catch things that aren't just radio calls. If you're gonna go after organized theft or organized crime, whether it's organized retail theft, organized gambling, illegal gambling, organized illegal vice operations, money laundering, those are not picked up on radio calls and traffic stops. Those are comprehensive investigations. That's a different service model, right? Historically, Lacey has been staffed as a response model. You get a nine-one-one call, you respond, and with little time is left over, we do public engagement and patrol, which isn't a lot, a lot of time left over. But what we're talking about is different crime model in a mid-sized town, so you need a different service, a different staffing model to have that service delivery. Cause you don't know if you know it's the town where you get away with anything. We know those towns, you can name them off, top of your head right now, where, you know, cops, there's not enough police officers in that area, and they can get away with anything. And all of a sudden, you start getting anything and everything. We do not want that here. Okay, again, reduced jail capacity up until recently, just within the last month or two, we were allowed to stop, open up the jail and get more bookings. For the longest time, it wasn't a violent felony or domestic violence or DUI, we were not getting a booking at the county jail. For residential burglary, I could not get a booking, and that happened repeatedly. So finally, that's now changed, which is good, but still now, there's some other issues coming up with that, we'll talk about. I got a letter uh from the county prosecutor and had a meeting with him yesterday. And the county budget reductions are going to have a significant impact on the criminal justice system. Uh they have been asked to look at eight percent reductions across their current budgets. The only place the prosecutor has to cut is personnel. That means deputy prosecutors that are doing criminal work. Each one has a caseload of sixty, eighty cases being prepped for juries. We're gonna lose those, we're gonna lose that capacity. That's on top of the fifteen-hundred case backlog or backlog from COVID. And the way they're handling that is if a new case comes in, they scan the list, does this person have an innocent, innocent case, and they match it up, and they move forward. They're not looking back at these cases and filing them, because they don't have the capacity. Now, on top of that, you do another eight percent reduction, that's gonna hurt. Eight percent reduction also of court clerks, court space, all that. Only thing that doesn't get reduced is public defenders, because they have an open checkbook.
Where did the eight percent reduction come from?
The county commissioners, and they did it across across the line on budgets, except for the sheriff's department.
That was the question I was gonna ask. Is that just an exercise right now, or is that the decision? Because you can say, yeah, give us your plan for an eight percent cut, but then you start making strategic adjustments based on what is an untenable cut. And the prosecutor's example seems untenable.
It's pretty untenable. First of all, and I'll do a little pitch with prosecutor, because we need him desperately uh for our felony crimes. Here, one of the lowest-paid prosecutors office, the ones they're they're attracting are all from out of state. They don't get in-state hires. They get, they don't get brand-new people out of out of law school, out of Washington. They get people coming from out of state that wanna move to Washington. They got some, uh last prosecutor, they got us from Australia, who wanted to come to Washington, who was up in Waukesha County, and they came down to us, because he wants to be a prosecutor. Um I mean, that's the kind of hires they're getting, frankly. And once they get trial experience, they move on to better-paying jobs, right? So they're they're basically an incubator for other prosecuting offices, which is why it's so important that their public safety, yes.
But they haven't made any final budget decisions. Answer your question is, is they are looking at the exercise and then.
I heard that it was an exercise right now, but it it amounts to what thirty people, if they just do it across the board, thirty people, not just in the prosecutor's office, but.
Across the board, yeah.
That's what eight percent looks like.
Makes sense, because I mean. Corporate tax, one of my commercial properties, one of forty percent, you know? Yeah, it's, I think there'd be more money for it as compared to less.
The problem with universal cuts is that it it doesn't understand the first job of self-government, which is to protect the populace, right? And if you don't have an effective court system and prosecuting system do that, you you've got people drive around who can't do anything, they have no effective power, right? They can, huh, stop doing what you're doing, or what? There's no consequence. That's a problem.
And there there is no alternative for us, right? I mean, we have to felonies have to go through the county prosecutor, right? There's no other alternative under state law.
The alternative will be what we have been doing. That during COVID, we subfiled to the look to the closest misdemeanor, which means that put heavy per heavy burden on Nisqually and our municipal court system. And by the way, our Nisqually bills have been going up because of that. We've had some long-term sentences now for the last thirty days at Nisqually, and that's that's boosting the cost of our jail time, because they spend time in Nisqually jails certain time, that costs us money. As versus felony, that's accounting function, they had to take up that cost. So they're transferring the cost onto us inappropriately, and we're still paying the bill. Two weeks ago, they were saying that the these cuts were gonna cost eighty county jobs, eighty. He's talking about thirty in a specific area, but eighty across the county. It's it's bad. It it would have dramatic impact on public safety here in Lacey.
Well, and and a lot of different core services at regional services too, you know, across the board. Uh this is the same type of exercise that the county had to go through back after the oh-eight recession, where they had a big contraction of budget, and we saw a lot of um. I I it was very heavy cuts all across the, uh and they're still having to recover from those cuts back in the late, so this could be seen.
Are they are they looking at this because the uh assessed value is dropping five percent?
I don't know enough to uh know exactly why, but I just know that they're they're running into some budget challenges. And which again goes back to why they came to the work session to kind of explain uh the issues that the sheriff department has in terms of coverage and the need.
We talked about it a little bit at the Board of Health meeting, because fortunately, most of the public health funds are not county funds. They're federal grants and state grants, so they have some insulation from the cuts.
So lastly, I'll speak to this larger issue, habitual offenders, uh personal cons, uh cognitive release, appear release, and lack of consequences. Habitual offenders are where you get a multiplier effect, right? We have people in our community, frequent flyers, or habitual career criminals, and they are literally doing life on the installment plan. We arrest them, they do a couple of weeks in jail, and they get out. And they get out and they do it again. And we see when they're out of custody, a lot of crime happens that they're usually good for. Um I my crime analyst says, hey, so so's out of custody, sure enough, that crime category starts taking up. Um they have particular MOs, we tend to know who they are. Um but again, if we're only in response mode, it's very hard to go after habitual offenders. It's just happenstance if you happen to catch them, versus having a proactive unit that goes out and and starts building cases on the individuals grouping crimes, identifying MO, and moving forward and actually going to investigate those crimes and follow up that individual, track that individual down, and take them into custody. Our detective unit is not designed to do that, of which we currently have three detectives. That's all in a discussion I will have in a minute. Okay. Moving on, again, city population, just to revisit that, six-point-two percent year-over-year, and not stopping anytime soon. Most aggressive growing cities to our benefit. Let's talk about police staffing. So twenty twenty-two, we were less than one officer per thousand, that's actual numbers. So we had an average of about fifty-seven officers last year of our authorized sixty-seven positions. Uh that was basically trying to fill spots.
So this 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 chart is um FTEs in position, not total budgeted FTEs.
Correct, okay. This is what what each police department reported they had on staff during twenty twenty-two, at the time that this survey was done.
If it was, if you were fully staffed, what would it look like?
We were fully staffed, we would be at one-point-one-five, would still be one of the lowest ones on this graph. Or on this chart. Um again, state average is one-point-three-six, we would be about one-point-one-five if all sixty-seven positions cleared at that number. That's not the number we have now.
Question, question for you. So i- is there a a huge difference in pay scale between between Lacey and Mount Vernon?
You know that question? Uh, the Mount Vernon is less than us. Yeah, we're one of the better jurisdictions, that's not.
What about Olympia?
We're you, we're usually, Olympia is usually a few dollars ahead of us, but it's for the region, we're fairly close.
Okay.
So we're currently negotiating with our officers, they have a tentative contract to vote on this week and next week. Um so we're hopeful, we'll we'll get that solidified. Um Deputy Chief's been heading up that effort, and I think they've come to a pretty good solution, but we'll see how that vote goes. It was across. Um but yeah, if uh if you look at us as being, so like I said, at six, at at the population that we showed, um sixty-seven officers would mean that we were at one-point-one-five officers per thousand residents, right? And I'll show what that staffing model looks like in a minute here. To meet the department, the state average, we would need eighty officers last year. This year, it's sixty, sixty thousand, we'd still need eighty-two, but eighty-ish, somewhere in that range. So again, difference between a response model and a service model, two entirely different things. So here's where we're at. So currently, we're at sixty-seven plus one. That plus one is because we've assigned one officer to the the academy, so that we have better access to academy classes. Um if you don't have someone at the academy serving as a tactical instructor, it's six to eight months to get in. If you have an instructor there, it's six to eight weeks approximately to get in. So it's to our benefit greatly to have someone up there. Also, CJTC rebates us the cost of that employee's salary, so it's considered a plus one. So we have, we have that person at the academy. So you have myself, the deputy chief, two commanders, two lieutenant positions, the instructor at the academy, nine sergeants, six corporals, three school resource officers, three community service officers, six detectives, two traffic officers, and thirty-two officers working patrol. Now, that's when we're fully staffed. This is where we're at today. Myself, the deputy chief, we have two commanders, we have no lieutenants, because I can't promote anybody, because I can't afford the personnel, frankly, out of patrol. I have the instructor, I have nine sergeants, I have six corporals, I'm down one school resource officer. I have one, I'm down two community resource officers, I'm down two detectives, I'm down one traffic officer, I'm down ten officers in patrol, for a total of eighteen officers down, which is thirty percent reduced staffing. That's about as far as I can go, without starting to affect services. And I'll talk about the strategies we're employing to maintain services. So what are we doing right now with those eighteen positions that are empty, Councilman?
Yes, when you have full staff of lieutenants and commanders, does that mean that supervision and support of the patrol officers is spread out between those four positions? So right now, you have fewer people supervising more and supporting more patrol officers.
The idea is for those two commanders are due to retire next year, those lieutenants will be taken in those positions. So we're gonna transition from commander model to a lieutenant model. So then those two commanders will then turn into two lieutenant positions, will be reduced, and so it'll be a total of four lieutenants eventually, but we're not there yet, we're not. Okay, but we need transition time between those two commanders retiring and those two lieutenants coming up.
Succession planning right now.
Right, so we have to have the institutional knowledge pass off. So we can't do that, because we're little people, so that's that's our struggle.
Does that that likely means sergeants will become lieutenants too, right? Eventually.
They can, they have to take a test.
It will.
Great, yeah. But that currently, I I have a list of three people that have passed lieutenant's test. Um so I have two positions on paper that I could fill if I had sufficient personnel, but I don't currently. What I do have is four people in the field training program, which one should come out this month. Uh I have one person in the academy currently, I have seven pending the academy. They have academy dates currently between now and January. Um but they're not there yet, they're all pre-academy right now. So we've been very aggressive in our in our recruitment, our selection process, and our background process. And I'll talk about some things we've done to facilitate that. Uh but even with all that, we still have six vacancies, we have three people in backgrounds for those vacancies. Um again, these are all entry level, every last one, if I have laterals, that greatly reduces my timeline. Um however, up till as of today, when I had some interviews, I didn't have any lateral candidates, now I may have some to interview, we'll see.
Chief, there's seven that are pre-academy, though, they're not employed, they're not even employees at this point, are they?
Some of them, some of them are, yeah, start dates, yeah.
Okay.
And the reason I do that is I won't lose them.
No, absolutely.
They are precious. Everyone is very precious, you don't want to lose them. We have actually lost people by not having aggressive start dates. Um and frankly, it gives us time to give them on board, pre-academy onboarding, get them all their qualifications, get them fully outfitted, and give them the context they need before they go to the academy. Because I understand the academies are impacted, greatly impacted. And the level of training isn't exactly what I would like it to be. They're struggling with some some issues with it right now. Um they're doing their best, but if we can give them additional training going in, it prepares them to receive that knowledge and to actually put it into context and be better officers.
So you actually do some training with them before they even go to the academy?
Yeah, we go through a bunch of different training, uh both legal and with equipment and tactics.
Okay.
So when the sheriff came and spoke to us about the new um Prop One, he talked about how expensive and also onerous background checks are. Is that the same for us?
Yes.
Can you say a word about what it's like to go through the background checks?
Great question, fantastic question, and it leads up to my next issue. Um I have one officer on a long-term disability. So what is our potentially plan to deal with thirty percent being down, right? So we're dealing with a shortage of of patrol personnel with overtime, shortage of personnel overtime. Um obviously, we have thirty percent of salary savings, because those jobs aren't filled. Um so what we're doing is basically hiring people on overtime to do that. What that does is burns out officers, frankly. So we're very aggressively trying to hire people as soon as possible. Uh we also are one school resource officer, we realize resource office is a critical part of this community, um so we fill one of the positions with overtime. Again, uh and you might say, wow, you're asking why are, why is crime kind of staying low? And I'll kind of talk about year-to-date. Why is that? It's because we have the business district augment overtime detail. So we have dedicated since April an officer, eight hours or six hours? Six, six hours a day, every day, from like six to ten at night, or six to midnight, I guess. Um patrolling all our 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 retail areas, um both along Cedar Kenny corridor and also now up in Hawksbury, uh retail area. To really make sure that we have a visible presence and to make sure that we're not having the retail thefts and organized retail theft that we've seen, that other jurisdictions have seen. And it's had a dramatic impact. Also, with the Sleet or Kenny encampment, we want to make sure we have a strong visual presence in that area as well. Uh and that has served us well, has been money well spent. This cost us a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do since April, but it's been, I think, money well spent. Now, also to augment the three detectives I have currently, um up and detectives. Uh we have the patrol investigative detail, it's a collateral assignment. Uh we've looked for officers that have an interest in doing investigations, so when we have a big case, uh if they're not the team working currently, we call them up, hey, are you able to respond and assist detectives? They'll come out with evidence processing, judicial interviews, help spread out the workload for detectives, so they don't get all get burnt out on large callouts. Again, uh we've streamlined our hiring process, and this is a really tip of the hat to Sergeant Walden. Uh we've incorporated Guardian software, which the old way of doing backgrounds is you get a postcard, and you fill all, you hand-fill all of out, or you do, you know, mail merge with Word, and then you mail them out, and you wait for hopefully the references to get back to you eventually. Guardian, we do it all electronically on email, really, really increases our response rate, both because people like to work electronically now, and it happens much quicker, but snail mail, uh that has really increased the quickness of our returns from references. Um how we do the process is that they they do a written test, they do the physical test, and they go to an entry-level interview with two sergeants and and um two certain, usually an officer, sometimes she's a corporal, sometimes a community member. Um and if they get past the oral, the internal of interview, then they come to me and I interview them. And if they meet the the Lacey, meaning they've got a tie to the community, they appear to uh be here for the right reasons, um. And if they meet the, the Lacey, meaning they've got a tie to the community, they appear to be here for the right reasons, um, then I, I give them a conditional hire offer. No one does a conditional hire offer after the chief's interview. Everybody waits until, until the polygraph, right? So once you go, you do the, the integrity interview, and then you do, um, right for the poly, do the poly after that, um, and then you get a conditional offer by most places. Well, conditional officer is kind of a letter of intent at college, like, hey, so other schools stop talking to you. Well, once I get you a conditional offer, you need to tell all the other agencies, hey, I got a conditional offer, Lacey. So I gotta, I gotta pause my background with you guys because I'm going to go with them. So that's, it, it shows the level of dedication that we have in that group. We also assign that recruiter mentor immediately. Guide them through the recruiting process, through the hiring process, because a lot of these people, obviously, they're all, all knew they've never been hired at a police agency before. They don't know the process. What do I wear to a psych interview? It's six hours of your life you'll never get back, right? And you'd ask the same question. There's eight hundred, no, there's a lot, a lot of bubble filling out. You could ask the same question fifteen different ways on the written thing. So people need to know what, what they're walking into, um, so that we don't give people answers, but we tell them what the process is, so we demystify it. And that we really see a lot of positive results with that mentoring program. Uh, again, so you asked about backgrounds being lengthy, expensive, so we also use public safety training and testing to do our backgrounds. That's one avenue we use. We also have a detective that does it. We also have sergeants on overtime that do them. So that otherwise we'd be backlogged and you'd be waiting forever to get these done. Um, we also have hired retired officers to come back and do these on contract. So we've, we're doing a lot of methodologies to get them done quickly and effectively. And we're, we make sure that they all go to the same training, they're all doing it the same way, so there's consistency through all the process. And as I talked about, the instructor at the academy, and then also we created the lateral hiring incentive, so that attracted off, uh, laterals to come over all. And also incentivized our employees to recruit them to come over. So you would come, they would come over, they would get at least five years credit toward year for year, whatever service they had in another agency. So that would go towards our longevity benefit. We added a five-year longevity benefit for everybody across the board. So if you have five years in, you start getting longevity benefit. Before that, it was ten years. So it wasn't until you're ten years plus one, you start getting a benefit. It's crazy, right? So we started five, because you lose officers in that five to seven year range. So it didn't make any sense to wait till then. So we've done certain things in the contract and through negotiations to add and make it more more enticing to become an officer here as your mid-phase of, of being an officer in your career. And that was all really thoughtful and mindful how we did that. Again, we don't want just giving, hey, here's a bonus, come work for us. We wanted people with experience, and they had to actually work here to get the bonus and to get that, that premium pay. Uh, again, we're delaying the promotion lieutenant positions because again, we, we need people on the ground. That's the first thing we need. All right. So here's a poor man's Gantt chart I put together. Um, this is our staffing model. This is October of twenty twenty-three. It goes through December of twenty twenty-four. Um, green means they're ready to be a police officer. Uh, yellow means they're in the field training program. Blue means they're in the academy. Gray means they're just kind of waiting. And orangish, beige is means they're in the background process. With that being said, like I said, I have one officer coming out in October. I should have one coming out of the training program in December. I should have one or two coming out in January. That's good. That's four. That's awesome. Unfortunately, I have one person always looking to leave the agency to go to a different agency. I'm not sure what's going to happen with the long-term disability. Um, I have the two commanders that are already said they're going to retire next year. I probably have at least one or two others that haven't told me they're going to retire. So four is good, but I can only count five that may be losing, uh, over the course of this time, time span.
Chief, when they do go to another agency, uh, uh, is it because there's more money or more action, or what are you, what are you finding out?
I've had a variety of answers for that. Um, currently is they're going to an agency that has more money, and they also have a, a medical retirement benefit. After you work for them for five years, you get a, a pro, you get a subsidized retirement benefit where the cost of, I'm sorry, medical benefit, excuse me, medical benefit, where the medical benefit is a very low cost. And it lasts for the time you retire until Medicare starts. And it's very enticing to people. And if you make more money in your last five years, that goes to your pension benefit, that raises your pension benefit. So I've lost two officers recently to that.
So it's an exit strategy.
Exactly. So it's, it's, that's one issue. Um, however, to do that, that's at least an hour, hour plus commute each way to go to that agency from here, if you live here, most people do. Um, also, in Lacey, people wave with all five fingers. There's other agency I can't guarantee that's going to happen. Also, the working conditions there are not exactly what they are in Lacey. Um, it's a different place to work, so you're giving up awful lot.
You've had officers leave and come back.
I have. I've had officers leave and come back, um, to go gambling. They came back. I've had officers go to agencies, go and come back. I've had, um, I've had officers go, I had an officer go to Seattle just for family reasons, frankly, because there was a family reason behind it. I've had officers go to an agency down south, again, for family reason. I've had officers go to east of the mountains, again, kind of for a lifestyle issue. Um, there's a, a lot of different reasons.
I mean, that's kind of happened.
I got a question. So do you see any of this changing? I mean, you've been a big advocate for the, for the new police station. Uh, do you, do you think, any, do you see any of this changing because of facilities? Um, I, I, so I know it's an interesting question, but it, it.
It is one of my big recruitment strategies. Whenever I do interviews, I have the model of the PD behind me, frankly. I really talk about the commitment of this council and the city and this community to their officers. You cannot walk out in uniform in this city without someone coming up to you saying, thank you for your service. Happens almost every single day that I go out in this community in uniform. Um,
It's an awesome.
That's, that's the special thing about Lacey, right? People talk about our officers, they're members of the community, they just have to be wearing a uniform, right? That's the special part of Lacey. You do not get that everywhere. Now, you have people that have worked here for years and never worked anywhere else, and they've never experienced that. And then they go somewhere else and like, maybe they don't like. Right? So I mean, that's going to be a new experience for some of them. So that is something that people really consider. That is something special about Lacey. It's one of the reasons I came here, frankly. Um, the new, the new police department shows a level of commitment by the city, the fact that, that frankly, it's being, it's fully funded by the city through councilmatic measures, um, is very telling. It shows a level of support. Um, are there other things we could do? Yeah, we, we've spoken about some of these other things we do, but it's really a function of budget and different things. I don't want, I'm not going to speak out of turn on that. Uh, but there are other strategies that we are looking at and that we've asked for in the budget that would help retention, frankly, and to attract other officers to the agency. Um, but again, that's a discussion for another day, I think. But there are certain things that we can do. All right. So you see, it takes a long time to hire officers, right? That's a pretty good timeline, um, of how long it takes. All right. So let's talk about the needs assessment. So as part of the design for the police building, we were just talking about, we did a needs assessment back in twenty twenty. And we looked at, what is it nationally? What, and this is again, per capita officers per thousand. Um, what is it nationally for, for a small, smaller town of hundred fifty to a town between fifty, a hundred thousand? We looked at the mountain region, the Pacific region, the west region, looked at Washington State, because at the time it was one point four. Remember now it's one point three eight. It's gone down because people can't hire officers, but still it's one point three eight. Um, we looked at Lacey back in twenty nineteen. Remember fifty-one, two seventy? Oh, those were the days. Right? And we had fifty-two officers, one point one, right? Holy smokes. Holy smokes, right? One officer per thousand, right? Twenty twenty, we projected our needs would be seventy-two officers, right? Based on a projection of fifty-two, nine sixty-five, that would be a one point three five officer ratio. Reality, it was fifty-two, nine, ten in twenty twenty, so we were pretty close on the estimate. We only had sixty-five officers then, and that ratio is one point two two. Again, the one point two, one point two five ratio, that's something we can work towards, and that helps provide a service delivery model, not a response model. Right? I think that's really what we've all kind of been working towards. Um, that's really what we've been working towards. Um, and that's really what I keep hearing, right? We like our school resource officers. We like the, the community resource unit. We like having detectives. We like to have people that pick up the phone when you call. Um, that's a service providing department. Otherwise, you just call TCOM, we respond, and that's the best we can do. We take a report, and hopefully we catch somebody. That's a problem. That's not the kind of, that's not going to have the crime rate and the quality of life that Lacey has come to expect. So looking to twenty thirty, now you're talking seventy thousand people. That's seven years away. That's very, very realistic. They anticipated a hundred officers, that's a one point four. I'm guessing more in the eighty-five-ish, ninety range, I would hope. Um, but yeah, again, that's seven years down the line. Plus, it would take a lot of time to build up. Now, if you're starting looking at annexations, some of the neighborhoods we've looked at annexing, you're talking about a increase in workload of fifteen to twenty percent. Now, that's not even touching the Quamuth development. That can't be a pay-as-you-go type project. That has to be built up with officers that can actually respond up there and work. We can't just like do it with current officers and pay as you go. That has to be, we need a certain amount of money, and we need to hire additional staff to fulfill that function. Right? So that is significant, that we need to look and plan with that.
For when they have to hand it off to us, because obviously the Quamuth have their own officers there.
Well, yes, but currently at the current squally casino, sheriff responds to there for non-tribal members. So it's a different response model. So even if they were to take everything there, they want us to take all non-tribal arrests, all non-tribal investigations, back them on traffic stops. That is a significant bit of, of resources. That is going to be a call-centric location, especially a casino and an event center.
So that's something that we need to talk about as we're.
And part of the conversation.
Uh, is create the agreement for that, but the model we talked about was, um, they, they would have a, they could hold a non-tribal member for a reasonable amount of time, which generally is top of twenty-four hours. Contact us, we look at the, the, the charges and decide if we prefer charges up to the prosecuting attorneys or the county. So there, there's a position where they would hold, and then we would look at and review the case.
But and so state, they can't actually make the arrest, on words. They can't file the charges against a non-tribal member. They're not, they don't have that ability?
They can, they could stop, hold, and, uh, uh, refer charges, and then one of our sergeants, I believe, right? Would look at that and see is there probable cause there to move it forward to the next step.
So can you transport when you're holding if someone's not under arrest? Or do they just stand there with them?
We would have to go out and pick the individual up at the, at their facility.
What if there's a use of force? There's a, a lot of things to deal with that. And it is not going to be simply a pay-as-you-go, with sufficient personnel, with what they're assisting. We're going to have to add personnel to do that, that, that development. Uh, but you have to see exactly all the details and operationalize all that to see what kind of staffing is required. Clerical staffing, supervision staffing, and patrol staffing. So let's talk about today. You're in day Q three. Um, this is January of this year through, um, through the end of September. These are fresh numbers, literally, we're pulling them today, right? Early, you know, twelve days in October. Um, so again, these are, the data I showed you was all finalized data, twenty twenty-two, proved by WASP, cleansed, all, all wonderful, right? This is raw data pulled from the, the record management system. It is subject to change, but this is the trends we're seeing, right? So so far this year, if you look at just these, these are the main drivers of non-violent crime, we're seeing a reduction, about twelve percent. Violent crime, the same thing, reduction around twelve percent. Number of incidents we're responding to is up three percent, but the number of reports are writing is, is down about three percent. Now, what does that all mean? That means the model we're using is working, right? The business augment detail, the month, the time we're putting out, and that overtime is working, the time, overtime they're putting into, into other details. Um, the, the extra patrol they're putting out with extension, with, with the overlap and the extension of deep, uh, patrol details, a shortage of personnel over time. It's working. It is finite. There will be a point where the officers say, I can't work anymore. I'm burnt out. I've got to use my vacation time. I'm running out. My vacation will not roll over next year. I've hit my max. I've got to burn some vacation. So we will be out of people. Right? So this is great. It shows the model works, the full service delivery model works, MOP works, right? CRU works. They are force multipliers. They reduce crime. That's fantastic. If we lose that, we hurt a lot. We will not see this kind of, of, of this through the next quarter into the next year. We've got to get ahead of this. So I'm talking to you today. All right. So pretty close to the end. All right. So what are the priorities of the police department? This should not be shocking. Uh, crime prevention in every engine, right? That's what, that's where the middle meets, middle meets the road, right? So that's what we do. Law enforcement, trade, de-escalation, new legislation, uh, the CIT requirements. You want well-trained officers that are certified and are doing it the right way, right? And I've spoken to this, I don't want to bore you, but we have a huge presence at the academy because Lacey is doing it the right way. People come to us and say, hey, how is Lacey handling this issue? What is your policy on this? What is your tactic on this? Because they know we are progressive, we are doing things the right way, use minimal force a lot. We don't use any force at all a lot of the time, but when we do use force, it's minimal, it's reasonable, and it's, and it's needed for that situation. Um, and then we document it, and then we evaluate it, make sure it was appropriate. Um, so I'm really proud of our agency and the level of training that we put in. Again, this is a big attractor for a lot of officers midway through the career, because at agencies where they can't get any training. A new, the new law, new legislation comes out, new laws, you get a PowerPoint. Here you go. Look at that on your own. Good luck. Go back, go on service at the road. We do an eight hours training day on new legislation. We sit them down, we spend eight hours with them, saying, hey, let's go do the legislation. This is what it means. This is what the stage is going to look like. This is how we want you to apply this law. This is the discretion you have. We go through all those issues, right? So it's not just, here it is, read it, good luck, you're on your own, right? We are much more thoughtful and methodical about how we do.
And we are still state certified, right?
We are state accredited. We are the only accredited agency, law enforcement agency in all Thurston County, and have been so since nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah.
Again, one of our big attracting, right, is our local professionals. So community outreach and transparency and care, caretaking, which I've spoken to quite a bit. Um, again, one of our big priorities, our staffing recruitment retention, well, I think it's something we've been working on. Obviously, you've seen all the work we put into this to streamline our process, to put a lot of people in the backgrounds. Before now, I was doing my best to hire between six to ten people a year. We're well above that in twenty twenty-three, but it still takes a long time to get people through the process if they're, if they've ever been a cop before. Can't move time, much as I try. So on top of that, here's all the projects that DC and I and the commanders are doing. Um, the mobile outreach team, that is a constant work, right? It's not just, okay, turnkey, you're good to go. It's, it's a constant work, making sure that uh, that we're keeping up on who's, who's man, who's staffing that team. Um, is it fully staffed? What's the DCR doing? Is the agreement with Olympic Health Service where it needs to be? Do we need automatic staffing? Do we need to plug a hole? There's lots of, lots going on with that contract and with that agreement. Body worn camera is an active, active program. Uh, we have people assigned to that, the implementation in-car camera, same thing, T sir, the new radio system. We have the equipment. We're working on training people on the new type of system. You're going from an analog push-to-talk system to a talk group, which is different, very different than the radio frequencies. So, uh, there's going to be a learning curve there that we're working on, working on new record management system with every entity in the county, um, so that we can all have the ability to train, trade data back and forth and not have people siloed. So we can actually have a, a good regional realization, regionalization of our, of our data. The new police station, oh, that's a big lift. Thank you very much. But my God, that's a big lift. Um, I know stuff about stuff I never knew and wanted to know. Um, I got to tell you about HVACs. Only left. Um, first you go. But yeah, Ashley killed me one day with HVAC. Um, that was fantastic. Uh, the community academy, we're midway through our community academy right now. Um, we do that every year, and it's really to, again, put the light on the police department. This is how we do, this is how we do what we do. It's not like on TV. Uh, we did use the force yesterday. Apparently Derek Thompson is quite the actor. Uh, his one-liners are awesome. I think we're on the show on the road, I think. So he had a good time, and everyone was laughing and enjoying, but actually learning while they're enjoying it, which is what we strive for.
And the academy class before that one, the, everybody that was in it with me kept telling me how awesome they enjoyed it, you know, and gave them more trust in the police department and made them feel safer and, and more involved, I guess.
And that's really what we strive. And all I did is gather more people, get more volunteers, get more people engaged with their community. Because that's the whole point, right? We want people engaged to ask good community members. So moving forward, the comprehensive emergency plan that we're all engaged in right now, that is, that's a big lift that we're going through. The accreditation process, uh, we've started, and we're up for reaccreditation this year, and there's thirty-five standards we're working on, a bunch that we'll work on. Uh, APPR, that is advancing pre-trial release reform. Uh, the sheriff spoke to this at the last meeting, uh, has to do with PR release, signature release, uh, of non-violent offenders. Um, I'm part of that committee, frankly, to be the voice in the room of, hey, law enforcement needs a voice in the room. This is the impacts of your decision. This is what's going on. Let's find a common sense way to apply this and make sure we're accounting for domestic violence victims. Let's make sure we're looking at habitual offenders, even if it's not violent crime, that are really driving public safety in the right direction. So let's make sure that we're doing this in a, in a good way. Uh, Lexipol, uh, which is the policy power DMS, uh, policy, policy, policy. I got to tell you, apartment lives on policy. It's something we work on. Uh, our technology integration, uh, we have an embedded IS professional with us now, and he's been a godsend. He is probably the most popular person at that police department. Um, people are in a stream. I'm glad I put him down, down the hallway from me. I see a lot of people now, because they all walk by my office to go, go talk to him. At least I get to see him sometimes. Um, so that's kind of cool. Uh, so regional law enforcement initiatives, so I've been talking about today. Uh, legislative reform, every year I spend a large amount of time with legislators and with our uh, lobbyists, really working on making sure that the reforms come in place, are. Uh, lobbyists really working on making sure that the reforms come in place are operational. And that they can be operationalized. One of these things came up like when they had the use of force change was, how do you do crowd management? There was no effective way to do crowd management under the rules they were giving us. And so we had a really good conversation about that. Just how do I operationalize this? Help me. How did you envision this? It's not written that way. The law has to be written so we can follow it. And. I get a lot of, that's not what we meant. Well, that's what you wrote in the law. So that's why I gotta follow. So I try to help them. Craft the legislation they really want to get to the impacts they want to get. And by and large, they see what we're doing here and Lacy, oh, let's just do that. We'll see what we get. Uh, again, Maple Court, um, lots of going on with Maple Court is taking a significant amount of time. It's better than it was. But we're going through some growing pains, right? And it's just a process you keep working through to make it better. Yes.
On the last slide, you show that you're about three percent up in uh, in incidents and three percent down in reports. Which was one of the things we talked about when you gave us the briefing on Maple Court was that we were getting a lot of calls, but they're not resulting in a lot of reports.
Right.
How much of that three percent up and down is Maple Court?
We are looking at that data. Um. It's hard to say before, frankly, and it's hard to see everything that's involved with Maple Court. We have a lot of anecdotal information. Uh, we recently had a transition in management at Maple Court. Based on some stuff that we were saying and and Lehigh incorporated our feedback and very quickly changed management. We were very pleased with. Um, however, it's it's a give and take process. It's a growth process as we work through this six page agreement. Um. But overall, I think it's positive. And I will tell you, it's interesting because I I gained one hundred twenty seven homeless people in my jersey on my point in time count. I I didn't see that clause in the agreement, by the way. Um, I went from ten to one hundred thirty seven, like what? Like, yeah, I get they're counted as you now. But they're housed. Doesn't count. They're still homeless. Okay, so.
Yeah, and 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 with the uh, the operating council that we set up with the the. County staff, the high staff and Lacy staff, they meet meet on a regular basis, resolve a lot of these issues and that's, of course, that council's uh. Staffed with um, uh, community development folks, um, as well as Sergeant Landry, I believe, with the CRU. So we keep that communication going and real deal with issues quickly with Lehigh and the county. So. Um, it's it's one of those, it's it's a big lift and it's it's organizationally wide, you know. Of it. The other thing too, just to kind of quick on the anecdote was, you know, I've had people come and talk to me about, well, they had interaction with somebody from Maple Court. I said, okay, well, where is it? What's the details? And they, how do you know it from? Well, they were down at the corner of Galaxy and Martin Way. I go, well. That's not actually, how do you know, you know? And so that's one of the things nice with the CRU and their their involvement. Uh, and they're doing the outreach is they're now looking at how to quantify some of that and get some real information about what's really associated with the. Uh, the growing pains with Maple Court versus what is out there just in the community as as it was, that's probably there before. So we're trying to get that information grounded.
Like decision incorporating the new law, going from a felony to a misdemeanor, totally different change of venue as far as where it's heard, how's it being processed. That is a whole growth dynamic going on as well and the costs related to that. Um, that's all something that's unfolding and crying constant work. Uh, and we do a lot of see. Think you've noticed, lots of strategic planning for the future law enforcement needs, right? We really look forward. To see what's coming next. What are the trends are going to impacting us? How do we adapt and respond to those trends? How do we get ahead of that? So that we are not always eighteen to twenty four months behind because we can't get the staffing up to speed, right? So really appreciate the work of the council and the city manager and Troy and his people and everybody, Frank, all the other state departments. Um, to really help us work through some of these issues and 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 really come to some some pretty creative solutions so that we are prepared for what comes next. So that, that's in my slideshow. Um, happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
No, I was constantly interrupting you, sorry.
No, it's okay.
No, I mean, lots of great information. Um, obviously, we understand the circumstance you're in. We we need more police officers. I mean, we need to get to full. I mean, first things first, let's get to full um, employment, right? I mean, and then let's work on on getting the numbers up. But, you know, let's first get to full employment.
Yeah, and that's that's the that's the that's the tricky challenge of this too, is when you look at those uh, those racialist broke one thousand. If that's just how many bodies we currently have in position, not counting what budgeted. I mean, that racial looks different if you just look at the budgeted positions. There's two issues there that as we grow, we're continually have to uh. You know, expand and be strategic about how we expand budgeted positions, but then how do you keep them full, you know, occupied and 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 rolling? Uh, and then also to add into it, anticipating growth over two or three years. How do you start creating positions so that you can start the recruitment process? Because you have that training timeline going forward and that's where. Uh, the chief put in there the last strategic plans. That's one of the things we're gonna be looking at over the next uh, you know, year. There are two uh, organizational wide as well as police department. How do we look at uh, increasing staff to keep up with the needs of the community?
So chief, what what do you need from us, from the council, from this, you know, from the city, from what we have the ability to do? To help you fill not necessarily more positions that obviously we're gonna need more, but the the to fill in at least the budgeted positions, right? So that you can maybe get to that point of fully staff. Is there anything? We can do? Is there anything that you need to help get there?
So. The thing I'm asked most commonly for are take home cars, to be blunt. And it's something I ask for in this current budget. I don't know if I'm getting it or not. Um, but it's expensive. It costs a lot of money to get cars. Cars are expensive.
Is there a way to phase that in over?
That's.
I did, I've done several ride alongs of late and every officer that I talked to, and I talked to a bunch while I was out there. It came up in every single conversation.
It's also a crime. Well, I mean, if someone's thinking about doing a crime in the neighborhood and they see a cop car or two in the resident.
There's 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 challenges to take home cars and and it makes because your fleet automatically doubles.
What do you do?
Our command car runs twenty three hours a day and that that blows my mind. We we really should get that fixed.
Well, again, it's one of those things we're looking at budgeting. You got capital, equipment costs. You also have to have a support network to support the additional addition of fleet. You got mechanics, you need space to work on them. So it creates an exponential challenge. Um, there is a probably a need to looking at uh, different positions, you know, callouts, those type of things. Um, and and again, looking at it as a uh, strategically of how we would roll that in and how we have minimize the. The uh, secondary and and third effects, because it it creates challenges to ripple effects.
Yeah, I know it's not easy, but I think it's something that. Clearly is wanted by the officers, maybe it may be a huge factor in both recruiting and retention. And I think that even though I get it, I know there's a lot of challenge. I'm not saying tomorrow we just go to take home cars. Obviously, you can't do that. But I think we need to at least start looking at how we phase that in.
And I think you also need to have some policies around it. There's a there's a you want to have officers in and close to the community, so. So you don't have to take home cars that go beyond the county. But those are all things that can lead into that. And then you also need to see a Lacy vehicle, you know, somewhere else. So we'd have to have some. Talking about that.
When the workforce is lower as compared to fully.
Well, also, so the city manager is quite right and to and to really bolster his point. The proposal that was made was was just to bring it in stage, in in stages and in phases, just as you spoke to, is you. Supply chain, let alone will not allow you. Do you really want a bunch of one year type cars all of a sudden and all the problems that come with that one product here? Um, so you've got to phase in it over time. What what's the proper car for that? So they all have to be the current patrol car? Can they be a different, you know, a different item? Does that work better depending on what the what the model is, what that what that position is like? Our detective cars are not the same as our patrol cars. They're slightly different, right? Um, because they are not doing pursuits. They're not doing all the places responding, slow speeds, get where they need to go. Um, so there's there's options there, right? And so it's really. And as the city manager is talking about, it has to be strategic, it has to go over time. Um, a phased in approach is always better than than, you know, the. Turning on the water for full blast, right? Uh, we've worked on the policy issues, frankly. Um, and and addressed a lot of things. We've been working with the bargaining unit as far as, okay, what would this look like? What happens when you've got two traffic officers and one traffic car? Right? Who gets to take it home? Um, so it just was kind of working through some of those issues to make sure that one. There's cars here for people who need them, right? Doesn't do any any good to have cars sitting sitting at home for two weeks while they're on vacation, right? That needs to come back to the station. Um, then we could put back into the pool. However. I can tell you, both talking to fleet, fleet management and from all the studies I've done, people who have take home cars tend to care, take care of them better, right? Um, they also, your fleet has some longevity to it. Um, so. Has to be thoughtful, has to be strategic, but you know, is it something officers would love? Yes, they would love that take home person. If I had a magic wand, would I be able to, would I want to do it? Absolutely. But it has to be thoughtful, has to be mindful, like everything else we do. Um.
You always know where everything is too, in the moments notice, you know, as compared to sharing a car with one or two of the people. Where they have their particular things that they where they like to have things and this someone else is different.
There's a hundred percent accountability that comes with it and that's that does also help the fleet guys know that, hey, if you're. Uh, always ding up your car, there's always a mechanical problem or whatever the case might be, they have a person that they can now go to. Right now, sometimes you get lost in the mix because of calls, we're changing cars and everything like that. So.
Where are our current fleet getting fixed? It's it's not here, right?
Typically is maintained with a public works uh, facility with our mechanics down there unless it's a bigger issue, they will um. Um, you take it to a dealership or or a certified uh, repair shop, depending on what type of damage and everything. Um, also too, though, um, our mechanics and private work operations are getting uh, forward certified so they can do warranty work. So that's another big bonus that they're doing. But you know, some of the things, these are the things I'm starting to kind of learn. I'd never really thought about before, but you know, we talk about. Fleet, you got the the how how do we repair? Do we need more mechanics? Do we need more uh, shop spaced? Um, also too, each one of those vehicles has um, are outfitted. Uh, and complete with laptops and those type of things. Then that adds how do you, you know. Scale that on with, does it have, what type of tech support does that need? Do you need more, you know, but so it's just, it's it's something we gotta think of deliberately consciously and and and.
These cars are very complicated, expensive things nowadays. It's not the old days where I started was a radio and a notepad. That's what you have in the car, right? Um, now it's a a a multi-function radio. Now it's it's like a. At least one computer, if not more, um, every doodad you could imagine. Um, and it it is true and the back is just packed jam full of different types.
And and the values having, and among those, the all that, I'm sorry, the all that tech, the value of having. An um, IS person within in the police department is working with out of the IS department is they have that quick uh. Uh, access and troubleshooting when they do have something go wrong. When I did a ride along in one of our uh, shoplifting uh, operations. We had to come back because the laptop been fired up on the way back, uh, you know, the sergeant radioed in, Austin, that's right out there. Thirty seconds back on the road and but that's that's an added value. But those are things that, you know, again, we have to look at and how do we build that up in a in. Not only in the police department, in the, also in the organization.
I think the biggest challenge is patrol though. I mean, uh, added benefit is being detective or being on the SWAT team or. You know, something cool out of the ordinary, but the the biggest challenge and the most officers were down is when it comes, I might be speaking out there, but.
No, it's you're absolutely right. So one of the things we've we looked at frankly was our staffing model, right? And our schedule. And we said, is that something we need to change to augment staffing? And I hate to change it because it's such a bonus for officer wellness, frankly, officer well-being and it's a big retention and attraction because. Ten point seven hours, you work in fourteen days a month, fourteen, fifteen days a month, depending on the schedule. Um. That means you have four to five days off where you're not thinking about police work. I can tell you when you're on a four ten, that first day, you're just trying to. Get your head right. Your second day, okay, back to being human. Third day, okay, I get ready to back to work, right? As that's if you don't have court on one of those days off for an overtime gig or whatever else, right? So having those four or five days in a row off really helps officers reset. And I really think that's the reason why it lowers our our uses of force and because increases our officer's ability to have patience. We change that model, we extend their day to all sort, you know, to other other alternative schedules. It concerns me.
And long term, L and I too.
So long term, you know. Sick calls, you have all sorts of things, right? Crashes, all sorts of stuff. Um, so it is something that's concerning, right? So I I that's why I like our schedule and I consider part of our wellness benefit. I had to kind of laugh when they were talking about the wellness benefit last last good last uh, meeting. Um, my officers don't have time. My 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 front office staff doesn't have time to take an hour off to go do a poker walk because they they're that heavily worked. Their workload is so heavy in that front office, they can't take an hour off to go do a walk. They don't have that time, they don't have the capacity. There's not excess capacity to do it. So what we've been trying to do is over time. Grow not only officers, officers, but also the support mechanisms, right? That because for every officer you see, there's all these support mechanisms. We talked about Austin. We've talked about professional standards, Sergeant Walden. We're talking, you know, our front office staff, all all the the public records specialists that do all the paperwork and make every the shirt, you know, hey, officer, you didn't do this. Hey, didn't do that, right? The documenting of all the training, the planning of all the training. There's a lot of non-commissioned officer work going on over there to make sure the police department.
Thank you, chief. We obviously have a a much uh, broader uh, you know. Idea of of some of the challenges where I'm, and obviously this goes with the the growing pains of us going as a community so fast. It's not just in our place, right? We and we're having problems with other words. We're coming in, we've grown so fast as a community. This is the growing pains that we're that we're seeing. We're seeing it with the police, but we're seeing it across the entire, all of our employees, you know.
And we'll, I will tell you though, chief, in the public view, because obviously we deal with the public quite a bit. Um, I I never anything but accolades for your for your guys out on the street, your officers. Uh, I think you're, I think the community really does love our police department. They really do. I hear nothing but positive in the community.
And and then kind of next steps after this, you know, of course, we're always kind of work on the recruitment piece. And so in addition to all the work that uh, folks in within the police department do, are supported with uh. Public affairs, trying to get messaging out and and developing recruitment materials. Our HR department, we have uh, staff that helps support that recruitment hiring process. And then, of course, it takes a lot of the, again, as good as our officers and our police, you know, folks are in the community. They're also our best ambassadors in the department for recruitment. So having them going out to do those interactions as well has been very.
But let's get on to our last agenda, I think.
Alright, so.
And after eight o'clock, I'm like. So, thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
So on this, this this last topic is is to follow up the uh, conversation with uh, the Thurston County Sheriff and the. Thursday County Commissioner, Commissioner and the acting county manager, you know, the work session to talk about proposition one and the need by the uh. Uh, the sheriff's department to add more uh, patrol and and then help with the court services. Um, council uh, given direction to us as staff to kind of prepare a resolution, support for consideration at your council meeting next Thursday ninth and nineteenth. And there are two pieces of that that we just want to get some clarity from council tonight. Uh, one, the first one is, um, you know, if the the proposition is passed. Uh, a statement that says how the city of Lacey would utilize those funds. Um, and we. Uh, last week in the budget workshop, we talked about some of those buckets that could be considered. Uh, but again, I want to reiterate that. Uh, depending on, if if the proposition passes, we would not see any type of uh, uh. Uh, revenue collections till June. And so what we would do is then go into sometime in March, a budget member process with council to look at. How those funds would be utilized specifically to uh, uh, for for law enforcement purposes. But and for the for a resolution, I would recommend a statement to the fact that um. Um. That the city uh, will receive those funds uh, into the the city's criminal justice account. To be restricted for law enforcement purposes only. And that way, that gives the council, when they do see those funds and see all these different pressures and demands, how to best utilize those funds going in, do that uh, direct discussion on which. Or this later in twenty twenty four, council will still have the the ability to say this is how those funds are going to be used and define what those law enforcement purposes are. If I can, and in fact, if I can get heading on, we can then incorporate that funding reach.
I thought it was important that it goes into a restricted fund, right? And so we know it's only going to be used for for this purpose. We actually already have a fund set up that I think we'll we'll put it in. So uh, that's restricted. So I think it it makes sense to continue to use that fund and and let the public know that that's what's gonna happen.
Completely agree.
Okay, the second item is do um, is the conversation around one resolution and embed both topics of support. And how the funds will be used in that one resolution or two separate resolutions. And uh, so this is where the, I think it'd be good for the council to have the conversation about the merits of either way and uh. You know, come to a consensus of uh, and direct them towards.
I'll take over since this is a council decision. I I I know we're we're uh. You talked about this uh, last last week and I know there's a difference of opinion between Councilman Greenstein and maybe even uh, Councilman Kunkel. Um, and myself on this, I. I think it's really important that we include this in what is run resolution, that. We want this to, we are encouraging the community to support this specifically for all the needs that we have just seen. It's not something I'm I want to stay silent on. I think it's important that the community knows that this is is very important. And, you know, there's there's no reason in my mind to put that into two different resolutions. And so, you know. I know Councilman Greenstein has a different opinion on it and that's his prerogative, but you know.
We can talk about why before we get to the point of deciding where we're going on it. We can talk about why before we get to the point of deciding where we're going on it. I mean, for me, clearly, I pers- personally. Support this a hundred percent, have had a conversation with the sheriff that I'll do anything I can to help him get it passed because I support it a hundred percent. However, philosophically, and you know where I stand on this, Andy, because I've had the same position for the twelve years I've been on this council. I do not believe council should take action as a council in support of or against anything going before the voters. I think it's inappropriate. But again, we're gonna, we've disagreed on that for twelve years. That's not going to change. All I'm asking is that we do this as two resolutions. I see no. Reason how it hurts what you're trying to accomplish by separating it into two resolutions. Um, because obviously one of them I can support, one of them I can't. And that's the reason I asked for it. I'd prefer it to be in two separate resolutions. I see no downside. To it being two resolutions.
Maybe this would help. Um, I would be supportive of two resolutions solely because I know he will support one of them. And they're both important. It's better to get support for either the two as compared to. You know, half of. That's my sense.
Yeah, so I I would also agree with Councilmember Greenstein. Uh. We want as much council input on this particular issue as possible. And the best way to do that is by having two resolutions. Uh, to Lenny's point, there there is no downside to this and it does display to the public what the intentions are. I I do think that this is a better model than having one resolution and it will give all the council the opportunity to chime in on this particular issue. I I don't really see a downside to a.
It would be cleaner. I appreciate it. I.
Two resolutions and I know the. They have our, the staff already has the resolutions ready to go. So why not just offer two resolutions?
I was in here last week. Let me just make sure that I'm aware of the two options that we're discussing. Either one resolution that expresses support for. An approval from the voters on the prop and an indication of what we would spend it on in Lacey, our portion of it. Or one resolution supporting the proposition and a different resolution. So talking about how we're going to spend it, which in this scenario where there's two, you wouldn't support taking a position of the proposition, but you would. Chime in on how we would use the money if it passed.
Exactly. And I would do the same way I've done it for twelve years, which is I I don't, I vote no on the on the actual agenda. And then I abstain from the vote on that issue because I don't believe it should be on the agenda at all. The other one I would vote on because I don't have an issue with that one being on the agenda. So and that's how I dealt with it for twelve years.
No offense, Lynn, but I don't think we ought to be doing resolutions to accommodate an individual council member. I think splitting this into two resolutions weakens it.
Yeah.
I mean, I I think. You know, we're the council.
We we have three council members that expressed that they would support two resolutions. So it's not just one individual.
Maybe this will go. Uh, so when I first got on council, I met um the time mayor Clark Saban. Anyways, Virgil, and he said, and he tried to talk to me about the importance of. Everybody, whenever possible, you can voting unanimously, even if you had a little issue with. Or or some or a major issue with something. It it was, it was really important to him and and another philosophy that. We all agreed whenever we possibly could, you know, and and I see the benefit of Lenny Bialdo's support. One re- resolution solely as compared to a a one of two as. So in in support and one of them a hundred percent as compared to one not be able to support at all. And um, I think it shows solidarity in a in a. A commitment from coal. I don't know. Maybe it's just me, but I.
And it would be inclusive.
It's a, I think it's important and it's a, it's a difference in opinion. I think it's important that the public knows where this council stands on an issue that's coming before them. If it was a tax issue that we all disagreed on, that we thought was going to be detrimental to the city of Lacey. I would expect us to pipe up and say, hey, this, this is not good for the city of Lacey. We should vote against it.
How does the resolutions change?
So again. It's the.
It's still pass.
Second, it's the, it's. I believe it's important that we say. We're in favor of this because this is how we would spend the money. You can't, I don't believe you can, you you you're separating the two. You you can't have your, you can't even two here. Either you're for this passing so we can use it for this amount. Or you're not. It's it's as simple as that.
I I'd really like to hear the deputy mayor's opinion on this one.
Is it, is it your belief that if we resolve to back this proposition? That we are telling people how to vote?
Absolutely.
Do you have something to back that up?
Well, that's exactly what you're doing. You're making, you're passing a resolution, asking people, telling people to support a specific thing that's on the ballot. I have, it's a philosophical issue for me. It has been since the beginning of my time on council.
Which is cool. I understand your your that you've you've taken this stance, you've held.
And I've taken that stance on things that I supported many times. I mean, when TCOM went out for money, I I was on the yes committee for that. I actually worked to help that get passed, but I still wouldn't support it as a as a council. Individually, I think every council member should support anything they want to support. I don't believe as a body, we should be taking action on it.
But we sure are going to tell them how we're going to spend it because of the.
If it passes, telling them how we're going to spend it isn't the same as telling them how to vote on it. Two completely separate things, Andy. They're not the same.
Okay, I'm tired of talking about this. Let me just want to show of hands. Who's in favor of one resolution compared to two? I'm I'm in, I move that we have one resolution. Is there a second? Is it, we've had discussion. Okay, so I still didn't get an answer, though.
What didn't get answered?
It's a philosophical difference.
I'm not sure what the question is. If the answer I gave didn't answer, not sure what you're asking.
We should not be telling the public how to vote. That's basically the bottom line.
So, I mean, I, I so I'm not sure what the question was that I didn't answer.
Okay, so. It is your belief that if we resolve to take a position as a council on an item? That we are pushing the hand of the residents who vote on that item?
Yes.
Yes.
You have evidence for that.
I'm not sure what kind of evidence it would be. I mean, it's it's what we're doing. It's we're asking, we're telling people how we think they should vote. That's what a resolution.
Telling the Lacy's and support.
We're saying that we support it, but they still get to make their own decision whether they vote or not. That that's, that's what I'm saying. That.
It's telling, I, again, there's there's no statistical evidence behind this.
That's okay, that's.
It's a philosophical issue that I don't believe we should take action on things that are going to go on the ballot for the public to decide. That should be their decision.
As great as it will be for the city of Lacey.
Exactly. That's correct.
Yeah.
It's irrelevant whether it's good for the city or not for me. It's a philosophical issue. You can argue about it all.
I've been arguing about all day. Anyway, so so we have a, here's a motion and a second. All in favor of one resolution, please raise your hand.
Support either way.
You gotta vote on one or the other.
Yeah, yeah. If we if we do it as two, I'm fine, as long as it gets done.
The motion is.
The motion is one.
Motion is to vote on, to do it as one resolution. That's what Andy's recommending. Obviously, I think differently. He's voting yes for that. Carolyn has voted yes. I haven't seen anybody else. Take action on the motion.
I agree, I agree too. It goes the other way.
Take a vote on the motion.
I want him in. I want you in on this. So I'm 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 gonna, I'm gonna vote for two resolutions.
Okay, so it fails. Okay, then then obviously our next step is there's to be two resolutions.
Right.
So uh, so we'll uh.
Thank you. Thank you to council. I appreciate that.
So based on that, we will uh prepare two resolutions. And Dave, you have any clarifying questions or?
No, no, I mean, there's no need. I have clear, I think, direction. There's no need to make another motion on that. Yeah, so the staff report will have three items. The first will be to consider a public meeting at which citizens or groups may speak in favor. Or opposition of the proposed proposition one. That will be, that's a requirement of state law. The second would be to consider a motion. Um, to adopt a resolution in support of that proposition. That'll be an action item. Then the third would be to consider a motion. To adopt a resolution declaring the city's intent of how to use the funds. That would be the third action. Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, we reached the end of our agenda. So the objection will call us, mean, enter.